Oh, the parcel. I got, I see that.
Oh, you keep your address?
I can put them in check or not. Outside of area that he live.
I could stay out to watch him. Oh, well, I didn't realize you moved down.
Okay, if I may, I have some problems down before I lose these, uh, watching somebody down.
Benny, good to see you. Good to see everybody. Good to see you there.
Um, they just, they have different guys come in and so, there was a little bit of confusion. Yeah, I'm gonna say, but then I got screwed up. So, good to see you.
Next call, regular meeting, North Huntington Park reported commissioner for Wednesday, July 20th, 6:17 PM, quarter, Oklahoma State.
Mr. Harrow, Mr. Hygge, Mr. Brackeney, Mr. Gray, here, Mr. Vicenda, here, Commissioner Caceres, here, and Commissioner Martino.
Here. Please rise to replace the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we're prayer. Father, we are very mindful of where we are this evening, and so we praise you because you've provided for us, you have given us your protection, and we are very grateful for that, and with all the activities that have been taking place in other larger cities, Father, even in foreign soil, we thank you for your protection. And Father, we ask for that protection to remain, especially for leaders in the community, but primarily for those first responders, Father, that by your grace and your divine providence, you would watch over them, Father, that you would keep them safe, that they may return to their families when their shifts are complete. Father, I pray that in the midst of all the suffering and all the chaos during this season, heightened by all the acts of violence against those in authority, I pray, Father, that you will bring calm, I pray, Father, that we might truly find peace, a peace that is yours, a peace that is beyond what we can truly comprehend, but I pray that, Father, at large for nations, but I pray that for this community. And so, Father, with the proceedings tonight, I pray that you will bless those perspectives. I pray, Father, it's not about personalities, or policies, or any of those things, but it's about the principles of law and order, of righteousness, of compassion, Father, of respect, and I pray, Father, that we'll guide and direct what takes place within this facility this evening. Father, again, thank you for those who serve for our betterment, Father, bless them because of their service, and thank you, Father, for this community, and the opportunities that you provide for us as you protect us and guide us, and your presence remains with us. We ask this all in Christ's name, amen.
Remember, tonight, we have video streaming and, uh, being, being videos and being recorded. First speaker is going to be Bob Summ. My friend, please state your name and address, please.
My name's Bob Summ, hello, I'm 808 Columbia Avenue. I notice on your agenda that you have to talk about Parker Drive, as far as, I want to talk about the trucks, the truck traffic, I don't care whether Triax, it seems that that's a cut through Route 30 to, to Lincoln Way. Now, for years and years, I pushed somebody to get something done, finally George Dunbar, did get posted by the state, but what happened, it stopped at that point. I was told by Dunbar's office, they would be up to the township, they put signs up as far as Parker Drive, because what some of these trucks are doing now, they get down, they hit Parker Drive, they go up, they come around, get down, down Lincoln Way. Truck's just 25,000 pounds plus empty, with something added, you're talking 70, it could be 80,000 pounds. One night last week, there's five of them down the road sometime somewhere, they still run there, and it primarily seems to me it's one company, and the name I seen on the truck is Swanson, I don't exactly where they are, and if they're white out or for sale, I don't know where, but they run there, some do the around, some just go straight through, they know it's actually outside. I think something needs to be done about it, you got a lot of older people, including me, that live on Columbia Avenue, and it's only a matter of time before something bad happens, they don't come down there 30 or 40 mile an hour, it's a client, especially if they're, and when they're loaded, you can smell the black mud because they're all kind of out of absolute. So I just wanted to say something, because I know you're gonna look at that issue this evening, and I just wanted to break it out and tell you my feelings about this thing going on for the last couple, three, three years, the signs have helped to a point, but there's still, it seems like one company is saying, you know, do that, we're gonna do what we want, my biggest plan, it will stop that around, so, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next citizen is, uh, John Watson.
Yes, I'm John Watson, I live at 1040 Manhattan Washington Avenue. I am, I would like to know from the board whether or not they have made a decision on whether to meet with, uh, police officers without suing us, the action arrived over this pace.
Uh, next citizen is Wayne Fatt. Name and address, please, for record.
My name's Wayne Matic, I live at 2021 Thomas Drive, White Oak, 15131. I'm here to start with my neighbors in attempt to get us recognized as North Huntington 15642, and White Oak 15131. I know that may seem trivial to some, but it does cause us numerous issues, and, you know, we pay our taxes, uh, in North Huntington, we pay our school taxes in Norwood, and, uh, we pay our Western Wood County taxes, but we don't enjoy the same things as you do, because there's many things that are different for us, and, you know, we're asked to pay 7% sales tax on any page of purchase we make. Our insurance premiums are higher for car insurance and homeowners insurance, we've been called for Allegheny County jury duty, we don't receive mail that is mistakenly sent to North Huntington Township, and, uh, the penny saver plus us $52, you hear, you guys get it for free. And degrees of work you're doing will no longer deliver to newspaper to us because of the 15131. We can't even get pizza delivered from North Huntington Township, because it's a White Oak food, it's a White Oak address, and, uh, WCC doesn't send us any education flyers for community college there, and, uh, my neighbors had young children, they have to prove with tax receipts from Western Wood County, where it is to play sports in North Huntington Township, or to also go to Sportsville School, or even join Norwood Valley Library, they have to come up with tax receipts, that's what we're at. And, uh, it's almost like we live on an island there, and if you look on the map, the county line is a straight line, but there's a little piece that dots out, and that's us in there with 15131. So, I know this has been attempted in the past, with not much success, but we feel several things have changed since 2001, when this was happened, and, uh, we think, we think we could, uh, the Eastport Postmaster and old Irwin Postmaster actually felt that this was a very doable thing to do, that the postmaster in Pittsburgh shut this whole thing down back in 2000. Right now, we have a new postmaster in Pittsburgh that was elected in November, so we thought we had a better chance now, that heard there. And, you know, the post offices said in the past, it just can't be done, yet when the new street, Bartley Court, was created behind the Balkan Hotel, they were given a 1542 zip code, and a North Huntington address, and they're right in the middle of where we sit at. And we figured if they can do it for them, why can't they do it for us? And, uh, and I know Hamfield and Swigley and Township all have Irwin addresses, but they're not the same as us, because they're not, they're not dealing with Allegheny County, they're sort of Western Wood County, and it's not that we'll ever forget. So, I, I know you guys can't make this change for us tonight, but I would hope you'd support us through setting up a meeting with the post office, as you did back in 2000, which was a very productive meeting, with, I guess, Congressman's office was here, and county commissioners, and the post office was here, and it looked pretty good until it was shot down in Pittsburgh. So, uh, my neighbor Dan McDonald was here tonight with me, and he, he also has some, uh, insight about some possibilities in, in my country, in this group, so we appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next citizen is Dan McDonald. Take your name and address, for record, please.
Hello, my name's Dan McDonald, I live at 2071 Thomas Drive, couple houses up in Wayne. Um, first off, is everyone familiar with this implied area, what it actually does, everyone know what it looks like on the map, both the North Huntington and the big cutout, I brought my laptop in case you wanted to see, I thought they didn't project this, my first meeting, so I was gonna pull something up. Um, if everyone's aware of what it looks like, basically, our physical address is North Huntington, we are Western Wood County, we recognize that, you get the taxes, what's happening with us is our mail has to come out of Eastport. The back and forth I had with Tim Murphy's office two years ago, kind of led me to believe that their concern mainly would be their postal, their postal character carriers in Eastport losing out on route in, in, in getting them, I wish it's understandable, there are several options, but I actually wanted to review a letter I got from Tim Murphy's office that I gave off, I'll do that. This actually went to John, I'm missing the name here, um, P H E L A N, Helen Belvin, I don't know how to say his last name, he's the district manager, western Pennsylvania for the post office, and he advised Tim Murphy that it would be far too costly to adjust the zip codes based on the area, uh, based on municipal collections, real estate, and other non-legal reasons. We're not arguing to change taxes, or change the counties, we're not looking into that all already physically there, we're still looking to get the zip code corrected in the mail address. And if they are concerned, and the main concern is who was with the mail, um, one solution, if we can actually sit down and speak with them, would be to have us 15642, but change the last four codes, to make it something specific only for us. The mail reader in Pittsburgh can actually get that, send that mail to Pittsburgh, we don't care if White Oak delivers it, and Eastport delivers it, as long as it's corrected, 15642 North Huntington, I think that's actually possibly doable that way, they can keep the routes, and we can actually get our zip code corrected. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Lynch, Lance?
Yeah, would you?
Sorry, yeah, would you read? No. Yeah, it's my, it's Chad Lance, I live at Ballpark Place, like, in Township. I'm having issues as far as my profession, my profession required me to, right now, have a flatbed record, okay, I'm on call weekly, and I respond to calls on a temporary front, I can have a set time as far as an EPA and arrival, whatnot, so, I'm getting bothered because anything over one ton is prohibited, which I understand you guys have organized, but I understand, that's fine, but I'm wondering if there's something we can have permit, as far as, like, if we say a hundred dollars a year, $200, six, whatever, and allow us to purchase that permit, so we can allow to bring home new vehicles for our profession. I wanna live in North Huntington, I've lived in North Huntington for a long time, all my kids have been raised in North Huntington, but, like I said, my job requires me to have my record, and if I can't have it, then I'll be either one, either out of the job, or two, I'll move out of the township, and like I said, I, I wanna raise my family in the township, because I enjoy it, but I drove around North Huntington numerous occasions, and I have photographs of vehicles that are over one tons in residential areas, the same thing that I'm getting harassed for through their zoning office. Now, theirs, their vehicles are visible, mine, mine is not visible, my record sits off the driveway, or off Clay Pike, probably about two car lengths back into the driveway. The only way to see my record is if you're standing in front of my driveway. Now, I don't understand why it's an issue, like I said, I understand you guys have organized it, but that's my profession, that's what I need, in order for me to pay my bills, feed my family, and raise my family in North Huntington Township, and I'm just, I don't wanna answer tonight, I would like, hopefully, you could come up with an agreement, a waiver, like I said, a tax form, or not a tax form, around everybody, a permit, we can buy a purchase yearly, a brand new vehicle, so we can, in your life, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the name of the, Gary Moran.
My name's Jerry Moran, I live at 13510 St. Clair Drive, and, uh, I want to, please, this called the attention on behalf of the Penns, Woods area, we're having an increasing issue with, uh, kids that are getting hook on drugs, and starting to go up into the parks, creating problems up in the parks, particularly Campbell's Court Park, which is a lot of North Huntington parks, it's a, it's, it's getting worse and worse, uh, just last week, and getting worse and getting much worse, um, the kids, they were up there, traveled out in, in the hockey court that we have up there, and they were flushing, they ran it, and that's, um, when they were doing it, there was people that witnessed it, they were up there smoking some illegal, tobacco, or whatever it was, they were all on it. We're trying to reach out to the police, to see if they can come up and control it a little bit more, I live right next door to it, I lock it up at night, it seems like, you know, during the evening, six, seven, eight o'clock, nine o'clock, close up at nine o'clock, they try to get up there by eight o'clock or so, and it just stops, just stops off, and, um, the neighbors around there, they're afraid that their kids come up there, we're giving the name to the police officers, the kid who did, and they interviewed a witness to it, we're looking for the police to, to try to help us out, and we'd like to get this drug issue stopped, uh, contact the police, possibly, they know, every time they call, they name my name, uh, but we'd like to see an increase in, in, in rounds made out there, like, that possibly take the lead, we give the names of people who are doing it, if they can follow up, and, you know, maybe we can ban these kids from coming up to the park, we're looking for some help from the township to, to step on and, and help us, to show it, and correct the problem, they wanna give us in the neighborhood the time it runs, and we would like the police or somebody to make a step up, and to talk to the air, and to give this a help, so that we can stop this mess waiting, because it seems like it's getting worse and worse. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next resident is Eric Goss.
I'd like, uh, my name's Eric Goss, I live on 13633, Morris Street Drive, and, uh, been noticing a lot of break-ins in our vehicles, uh, within four weeks, I had my Cadillac broken into, I had attempted on my house to be broken into, and now my Camaro, just the other day, and two officers came onto the house. I don't know what's going on, but, uh, we need somebody to start sitting in a unmarked car at night, not business hours. I have confirmation from, uh, some people in the community that they have, uh, initiated facial contact with, uh, the perps, there's about two to three of them, and each time it's been about four o'clock in the morning. Something needs to be done, because I'm gonna touch on it, and I'm not saying this is a threat, if I catch him, it's gonna be a bad thing for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that helps us, input. The first one, Bob Summ, uh, we're gonna discuss after the later on in the meeting, so we'll hold off on that one. Uh, next one is John Watson, yes, we have a meeting set up for August, please, uh?
Yeah, with the phone, Kurt.
Yeah, last, last Monday in August, we're gonna set up, we're gonna set up meetings, uh, in August.
All right, okay, so it is set up.
Uh, next two are on zip code changes. Any word comments, Rich? I know you've done this before.
Yes, I have done this before, uh, and I spent a lot of time speaking with Mr. Matic, and, uh, thank you for coming, that was a great presentation of all the problems exactly as they are, and the inconveniences, um, and thank you, Mr. McFarland, too. John and I have talked about this, I supplied Mr. Matic with, uh, pretty much the whole file that I had from, I think it was 2001, you said, I think I had a look at it before I came up. We went through great efforts back then, John, if you remember, we met in the side room over here with representatives of Tim Murphy's office, um, we had a handful of residents that came up to speak their piece, we had a couple of people that I thought were fairly high up in the postal, uh, uh, service. The last thing I remember them saying at that meeting was, uh, there was a woman that said, uh, "I think this is fairly doable," she didn't think it was a big deal, she asked me to supply her with individual addresses of all the people affected, which I did, I pulled it off the register registration list, and like Wayne said, that, um, it looked like it was gonna go somewhere, we want that at a meeting, it felt really good, and then And then it got up the chain a little bit, and somebody said, "No, we're not going to do it." And, uh, I remember the phrase that the post office used at the time was, "The zip codes were created to facilitate the delivery of mail. The fact that they have grown legs of their own and people use them for purposes for which they were not designed is not our problem." And they weren't going to change it. So, uh, they said they weren't designed to show what community you lived in, it was strictly to facilitate mail delivery, or what county you lived in, anything of that nature. So, it just fell apart back then, and we had an awful lot of time invested in it. I don't know, I said to Mr. Matic that maybe, oh yeah, it's been 15 years. I think that's reasonable, maybe try it again, and sometimes it just takes time for people through attrition to maybe get out of the way of something happening. And they're having some changes in the postal service, and maybe we could try it again.
I love you, John.
John?
What do you think, John?
I mean, I think it's an uphill battle, unfortunately.
I agree.
But, I mean, I understand the concerns, I understand where the people live, I don't live far from there myself, so, I mean, I know what they're talking about, I have a lot of friends who live with the zip code. We write letters for people, when they buy a vehicle, we write them a letter, let the car dealer know that people live in North Huntington. But like you said, it's inconvenient just having to get that letter to illustrate you live in North Huntington, so you don't pay the extra 1% on a car purchase. Um, but it's something we could, we could look into. I think the idea of the separate designation, the last four digits, is an interesting option. Maybe that's, maybe that's a middle of the road sort of thing that works better, and maybe actually can work, it's an interesting avenue. They may not think so, but I think it's interesting.
My name is, what's your name? That's Steve Hunter.
Well, it's being reported, so we want to make sure to get it.
Uh, no, the meeting's great, but I would like, if, if, I don't want to be a situation where presented and then you say no. At least brainstorm, let's work out the hows and whys, why can't it happen? Maybe we can all come up with something that actually fixes that issue. That example with the last four was just one example, but we'll take a couple seconds to come up with. I think the key is for us to at least get someone interested in talking to us. If we can get that to occur, we can certainly try to present as many things as we can for them, it's just a matter of if we even get their interest. But I'll certainly try on behalf of the board, that's what we'd like to do. Also, make sure that they're completely understanding, because the district manager that letter stated because of tax reasons and real estate reasons. Well, that's not an issue with us, we actually physically have that taken care of, it's just the mail is the issue. So as long as we're all on the same page, sounds good. The post office is an interesting group, we met with them, Andy Blinker, like, Andy's our township manager, planning director. We met with them, I'm going to say at least a year ago, now at least, and we talked about new developments in North Huntington, they have to be served by cluster mailboxes, residential plans. So if you go to the very new plans in North Huntington, there's various areas of cluster mailboxes, they don't have a mailbox anymore that's either on their house. How much of the last time in North Huntington, a house delivery was, was made, I think, Richard, neither of you had new house delivery? I have mailboxes, but the new ones have clusters, they told us we can never change those. Our rules are so restricted from the federal government who puts the rules on them, we can't ever go back. They, we have to get it right at the very first time, we're never allowed to go back, once we do this, we're set forever. And it sounded, I think to us, kind of almost, boy, that sounds almost crazy, we would be sentenced to that. But I believe the gentleman, he was kind of like, I believe, what, how they are restricted, the rules were on the postal service, so. Um, new plans in North Huntington are cluster mailboxes, whether the people like them or not, that's what they get, and from our discussion, that will never change. Unless rules at the federal level change, so. Um, it's interesting, some of the rules that they're, they govern now. I'm not trying to defend them, it's just, I think sometimes even the local people are limited somewhat what they can do. But we'll, we'll certainly try.
Okay, next challenge is, um, is flatbed record, over wifi?
I mean, the issue on this, just for the board's understanding, and I know the one, one tiny, Andy can confirm that, it's a zoning restriction. Uh, it's not based on the type of vehicle, it's based on the size. Um, there's no provision in zoning ordinance that allows some sort of a permit exemption, it's just not, that's not how it works. The board, I think the only way to address that, assuming the board would want to do that in residential districts, is revise that restriction. You would relax that restriction because you would believe that's not reasonable or not something you want to, you want to do. Um, as you know, we're in the process of working on our zoning ordinance, it's been a long-term project, but at some point, we're going to bring that forward to you. I would say that's the time you may want to consider revising that restriction. And I'm not advocating removing it, I'm just saying that, um, that may be the reasonable time to take a look at that. But from an administrative standpoint, it's not a money issue, it's nothing like that, it's strictly just a it, it's not permitted, you can't, you can't, I don't think, get a permit to permit something that isn't permitted, that's just not how the zoning ordinance works. If it was some other ordinance, maybe it's, it's zoning restriction that it limits it. Andy, you might have a comment or some order of this, but I wanted to kind of give you the administrative framework often.
I would just say we've not seen this, um, in the last year, for whatever reason, this has exploded. We've got people who are bringing crane trucks home, dump trucks home, uh, these diesel servicing trucks, tow trucks. And, and I'm not sure why, but it's, it's truly changing the character of some of the neighborhoods. And I can't tell you why a one-ton restriction was what was chosen, but in section 820.2 of the zoning ordinance, no commercial vehicles larger than one ton should be parked in a residential area. Heavy trucks such as, but not limited to tractors, tractor trailers, high lifts, and similar vehicles shall not be parked in residential districts except where they are being used as part of a construction project on a temporary basis. So, uh, one-ton is a fairly easy distinction to make in terms of capacity, and, um, there are some people that argue that, I remember a caller from, uh, Willow Glen didn't like an office supply truck, in the neighbor's driveway, but it wasn't over one ton, but they didn't like looking at the sign of the office supply company that was painted on the side of the truck. But it wasn't a violation of the ordinance, there's dump trucks in township that don't have any lettering on them, but they're over one ton, so. Somewhere I think you want to draw at the station, I don't think the commercial, uh, one-ton vehicle is a bad limitation, but either apply or you don't, and I don't know how you say, well, this one's okay, but that one's not. In this case, there happened to be two lines side by side, both of which ran out flatbed tow trucks from different companies. So, once you reach that point, is it still a residential neighborhood, or has it become a commercial district?
Andy, what do we do about the other residents that have over one ton, like you said, crane trucks, do we let them know?
We're working on it, there's a long, long list, um, and, um, it's going to be a while. Frankly, Mr. Lance made us aware of several we didn't even know about. But yes, we, we actually got a, uh, a fine from our magistrate yesterday on one of these, so. We're working on it, but it's going to be a while before we get them all in control. We send a notice, follow up, see if we can't find alternative places for them to park, if we can't get resolved because of the magistrate.
Is there any reason why he was being singled out?
Only because it was a large flatbed truck that wasn't there previously, and then it showed up.
Yeah, a lot of them are complaint, are complaint driven, just based on the nature of property property, we have one code enforcement officer, they're complaint driven in the process.
I guess, it's my fault on that, it makes it difficult for people, including cats, that as part of their work, that they have. You know what I mean? That's the big value of it, I mean, you can't take it, park it halfway across country, and you go get back off, because there is no place to park in the township.
Well, there, there are, I know of at least two people, and we made Mr. Lance aware of that, but do rent out space for commercial trucks for people who park a commercial truck there, then show up in the morning, take it before work, come back at the end of the day, get their car again. Is it as convenient as having it in your driveway? No, certainly not. But I, I think the purpose of zoning is to try and protect the character of a neighborhood. If we're going to say that a flatbed tow truck can be parked in some of these driveways, why not a tractor trailer? Why not a refuse truck? Why not a, um, on the line, pick and pack?
Andy, I've worked communities where people drive school bus now, or like a school bus, because they don't park in the, in the bus, they're not an option. Uh, which is okay, if the community is okay with that, then it's okay, but I've seen those things, and there's certainly people on both sides of the fence, just depending kind of on what your opinion is, what you want that neighborhood to look like. One of the things we do with home occupations, and I think the board's aware of this, we have home occupations permitted in our zoning ordinance. And the cri, the main criteria, I, I think it's a good one, is that your house isn't supposed to change. You're not supposed to store material outside, you're not supposed, you get a chance to put a very small sign up there designed, I'm not saying this is a home occupation, it's not like a business side of this house. But minus that, you would probably have people running decent-sized operations out of their house. Well, I see Commissioner Bevan in the audience, when she was here, she dealt with one, I believe, down on Stonebridge, that was a pretty large, Highstone, was a pretty large-scale, um, landscaping business with, it looked like a small commercial operation, you know, four or five trucks and three or four people come in the morning and. Um, again, if that's what you want to see, there's nothing wrong with that, but I would say that probably people that live in residential districts aren't looking really to see that or experience that on a daily basis. But it's something you could certainly, certainly look at. I would recommend doing it in conjunction with the ordinance, if not, you're looking, you're going to look at separately that specific provision.
And as far as, like, uh, Mr. Blanco said, yeah, there's places who rent stuff out, but, okay. So you're going to tell me I have to pay on work in North Huntington? I pay taxes just as well, but if everybody else does it, I'm going to have to pay, um, um, a rent space for me to go to work every day so I can make a living? I understand, like I said, I understand you guys have ordinances. But, and like Mr. Martinez said, I don't have to drive halfway across North Huntington to get to my record. What if I had a three-car accident in the middle of the car park, which I've had numerous occasions where I have 20 minutes to get to the car park. I got a turnpike to police, as well as a few guys. You know what I mean, but it's, it's just, I have an ETA, I need the key, and I can't be driving all over creation to find my record. And the last time I did, which I made effort to, I parked without a straight. Well, some, free, free, I even got stolen off of that record. You know, that came out of my pocket, not your pocket, not Casey's pocket, not, not my boss's pocket, it came out of my pocket, that was a thousand dollars. Out of my pocket. So on top of the a thousand dollars I had to pay to replace the equipment, I got stolen off my record. I have to pay sixty-five dollars a month to park my record, and taxes and everything else now. Let's, I'm just like, I understand you guys have ordinances. But, I have to make a living in order to supply my house, feed my kids, earn my living. You know what, I'm not, I'm not, no one hands me anything, so I have to work for a living, just as well everybody in the street does. Now, I'm not trying to say, oh, well, okay, be special treatment and forget the next guy. No, I'm getting cited, I'm getting cited here, I'm getting threatened, get cited if I don't move my record. Okay, so therefore, I move my record, what, what's that going to solve? That, that's not going to solve, it's going to solve your problem, it ain't going to solve mine. It's going to make my job, possibly lose my job, because my ETA's longer. And honestly, if I lose my job, then who's going to pay my salary for a year? Nobody. I got to go find a new job, and maybe, jaws are hard to come by now, I've been doing this for years, and I've been bringing this record home for years. In the township, no one ever said nothing to me. Someone got a chip on their shoulder and started complaining, and that's when it started. Because someone don't like somebody, or whatever the case may be, as far as that subject goes. So now I'm getting singled out, I got pictures in my back pocket of at least six, the, uh, company vehicles, over them, well over one ton, in their driveway. And like you said, it's going to take time to get to it, but don't start singling me out now. I want some, I want something done, if you're going to single me out and I have to start paying citation and work, I'll move out of the township and I'll rent my house to the section eight people, and we'll see how your zoning loves that.
I think from a standpoint of singling people out, I just want to make it clear, Mr. Blanco said that's not what we're doing. He made that clear, he said, and I, I know him really well, if he said we're looking at citing other people, looking at other properties for those violations, it's being done.
Well, I understand that, but what, 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 what's a, a pruner? That's, that's making your pockets heavy, with all the five citations doing the right.
We would, we would like not one citation from our zoning board.
Neither would I, but, so I'm going to get cited for making a living, for providing, for my parents. I'm going, I'm going to get cited for it. That's the most absurd thing I've heard. I've been, it's okay.
Something the board they want to look at with the zoning board, it's that special condition.
I mean, I would, like I said, if you want a proposal permit for six thousand dollars, I don't care what it is, I'll be more than happy to cut your check, pay cash right now, I don't care. But it's, it's, I need to make my living. And what do I do in the meantime, if you can't look into it, what do I do with the observing officers trying to slay, what do I do in the meantime?
I mean, I mean, Craig, you can give a legal opinion, but I would say that people have to comply with our zoning ordinance, because the zoning ordinance is in place. It may get changed, any ordinance might get changed in the future, I would say that it has to be complied with.
That's absolutely correct, and, and these types of ordinances are not, um, they're commonplace, they're commonplace in, in, in various communities. I'm sure that other record, ranking drivers at your business have similar ordinances in, in different communities today.
Well, municipality, like, every municipality, township is different, I understand, but the municipality of Norville, they all bother.
None of the record drivers.
They all live in Norville, I mean, if I got to pack my family out living in Norville, I'll rent my house, it is what it is.
What I'm hearing, uh, this board said, you said, we'll look at it, but right now, the fact zoning provision is in the ordinance, and as long as the township is aware of it, the township has to enforce its ordinances. And, and you've brought some other people to Mr. Blanco's attention that are violating the ordinance, and we're going to enforce the ordinance against them. But we will take a look and do whatever we can to help you out.
And that's, that's, that's fine, that's great, but like I said, if there's something we can put in place, talk about, discuss, for where we can bring these vehicles home. Now, of course, how to obviously keep your, how to keep a weight limit, as far as you date service crane trucks that they're talking about, that, that's absurd, that you shouldn't have to, you have weight limits on these streets, and I've noticed on some of these streets they bring them home, there's weight limits on their streets, and then the trucks are well over them weight limits. My trucks barely over one ton, it's like fourteen thousand pounds or something like that. It's barely over one ton. And, but, that's, that's fine, whatever, but I'm not going to move my record until I see other vehicles do it. Because then, once I start seeing other company vehicles do it, well then, I can see, oh well, they're actually trying to make a change, whoever not singling people off. I'll move my record when I see I moved the truck. When I start seeing one, like, have you moved two minutes? I'll move my record, but in, in as far as the record space, who's working out though? Are you, are you going to report this for me here?
Okay, I, I understand your issue really deep. Right now, we, right now, I can't, we can't solve the problem. It's, it's an issue with the township, not just for you, but maybe for other people that bring their, their personal vehicles, oh, they're over one ton. It's something personally I'd like to have a look into by Andy, as, as my big plan with, uh, talking to John, we go from there. But, until that's even looked at and approved by the board commissioners, which we can't if we change to the one ton to one and a half ton or whatever, you still, yourself and anybody else in the township, has to follow the zoning rules.
No, that's not, that's completely understandable, but like I said, they tell you it takes time and stuff, but.
It's going to take time, and, and unfortunately, we don't give, um, any kind of permit or anything like that, then.
It's just, it's not an option.
It's not an option right now.
I was going to say, it was an option, I was saying.
If there's something we could do right now at this point, we probably could do it, but we don't have any, any other options to have any look into it there, because Andy can go from there.
Thank you.
Hi, Ken.
Ken, question, would you say your vehicle was empty, fourteen thousand pounds?
We're thinking that it is. I didn't say what.
It's seven tons.
Seven ton, but empty.
So I'm.
Dave, it's based on the carrying capacity of the vehicle. I mean, a Ford Escort waiting on the top. It's based on what the vehicle carried. But I, I think the board's better decide, you know, you don't have to have zoning at all. There's communities that don't. I doubt Slipville has zoning, I, I doubt if, um, Ucker has zoning, I doubt, uh, Ryan or Township and Fayette County has zoning. Now, you take Cranberry, which is a very desirable place to live, they've got an ordinance that they enforce, and they have standards, and people desire that. So you've got to decide where on the scale you're going to fall. Do you have zoning or do you not? I, I would put forward to you that I think. I, I would put forward to you that I think the purpose of zoning is to protect the, the character of the neighborhood, which is typically what you see is a hierarchy of zoning, the residential's at the bottom, industrial's at the bottom, and everything else falls somewhere for them. So I think the question is, do you want to keep residential residential, or do you favor a blend where you can mix bulldozers, backhoes, left bins, tractor trailers, rental trucks in, in residential? That's your call. I don't get a vote, you guys better do what you want, but just trying to enforce the ordinance that we have.
I mean, like, like you said, you want tractor trailers, this and that, well, obviously, I'll let it be that, ha! You know what I mean? Like, as far as, like, if I don't have to drink something, I'll go to work. As much as y'all love your labor work as well, as everybody else needs it, I'll love it, but it's not my case. I mean, so if there's something we possibly do in the future, and near future something where I don't get harassed for earning a living, provide the support of my pay, because this is my bread and butter, and I need to make money.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Thanks.
Our next, yeah, our next two citizens with Jerry Duran and Eric Goddard, I guess. Have to shift it over to you, Rod, has to do with drug problems on St. Clair, and also the break-ins over in Pennsylvania.
Any wireboat incidents, Campbellport, I'm still under investigation, the ship officers are handling that, and the Niagara Drive with the, as it's termed, car shopping, we're aware of it, it goes on all over the township. Unfortunately, these are hit and miss things where they can be spent one night or two nights, leave, and come back two or three or four weeks later and do the same thing all over. Again, we've, we've been sending additional messages out to people, asking them to lock their cars, I think it's maybe become a little bit more sophisticated where they're starting to enter the locked cars now versus unlocked cars, but I'll have patrol checks made up on, on the two areas of the question, so that we have more patrols in the areas, and the only thing I would ask you, in reference to the Campbellport, if you hear any noise up there, call us right away. On the car shopping, if you see a suspicious vehicle, call us right away, because if we get car into the area and, you know, if we start noticing a familiar car in the area, it's a car that's starting to be looked at a lot more closer than just, you know, a car passing through a neighborhood.
Whoever these perps are, they're accelerating themselves, case in point. They're morphing into something bigger than that. When I went to my Cadillac, that morning, I was getting ready to go to church, and I saw the Cadillac door was ajar. I'd gone up on the car, the other car that I was in, proceeded to the Cadillac, and saw the glove box down. Stepped a little closer, saw the center console up. All right, these guys are getting good. They realize time is of the essence, so they're not taking the chance of closing anything, they're getting in, they're getting out. Now they're getting bold, attempting to go into my house with a screwdriver through the front door. And then just two nights ago, they got really bold, they tried taking a slim jig to my Camaro, it was already locked up, had a claw device and an active alarm system in it, I mean, you'd have to be a blind idiot not to see the active alarm system light go. These guys are getting bold, and if I'm not mistaken, they broke into a car a couple weeks ago and got a handgun. Is that correct?
We've had, we've had handguns stolen, we've had everything stolen out of cars. People leaving handguns in cars, leaving cars on the law. And it's, it's fueled by one thing. We're not, we're not an alone community in this, it's, I mean, it's happening all over. They move from community, community to community, and they pick on the better off communities because they know we have better vehicles and keep worse stuff in our cars.
Well, the night the Cadillac got hit four weeks ago, I called the police department, and the dispatch advised me, by the time it already called, they'd already had twelve previous calls, said over twelve to fourteen cars got hit on warm speed in Beth's Woods that night. And these guys seem to be good at one time, too, around four o'clock, which is great, because you know why, everybody pretty much for the most part is really dead asleep.
There's a lot of traffic out.
Right on, yeah. I'm asking the community, I'm asking the board as well, please, and the police department, if you guys could, I know that you have three detectives on, on, on the job, on the payroll, how about putting them in plain clothes in an unlocked car, I mean, completely unlocked car? And, and I realize that these, these guys are bouncing from community to community, but man, we're going to catch these guys, I know that we are. They're going to, they'll slip-
We have caught them, different groups, we have caught different groups.
I was advised yesterday that you guys caught one.
No, we've caught more than one group, we've caught more than one group. But it's, it's all different, because it's in the paper by reason, they figure it's not an easy way to, you know, hide messages all across the state on this, trying to identify people from cameras and stuff. So, I mean, we're aware of it, I mean, your suggestion, I'll take under advisement, and talk to the chief and the back communication, but it might be a, a dual option. Even if we put a, 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 a cloth, a uniformed officer out in an unlocked car, you know, just sit, sit in the driveway someplace, have a driveway somewhere where you back a car, it looks like it belongs there.
Well, they assumed the light may, so I'm offering my ass.
Okay.
It's thirteen, six, thirty-three.
Good enough.
Warm speed. Nice.
We'll be in touch with you if we're going to do it, we'll let you know that we're going to put a car in your driveway so that you don't look out the window, see a strange vehicle sitting in your driveway.
Sounds like a good idea.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Robyn, as far as Campbell's Court, I've got a couple things to bring up on that. Jerry, you may mention a lot of specific person, and that being Campbell's Court is a private park, it's owned by, by Pennsylott Civic Association. We can send a letter, well, you can send a letter to that person, if he was involved in anything up there, like the thing with the rabbit and that, and he's one of your problems, I wouldn't single him out, I would tell each one of them, forbid them to be on our property. And at that point, if they go up there, they could be arrested for defying trespassing. So that would possibly keep that person out of the park for you, you know, maybe a little while.
And, and the only thing I would ask, if you do send letters out to people, that you give us a copy of the letter, so we keep it on file as a trespass letter, if we catch them on our own on the property, we're already aware, they've been notified to not be on the property, then they can be cited and arrested for trespass.
And do, do you have signs up there? It's been a lot since I've been up there, as far as if it closes at dusk and-
Yes, there's no trespassing signs.
Yeah, I know there's no trespassing signs, is it something as far as that it, that park closes at dusk?
Yeah, the big sign that's on the fence on the basketball court, there's all the rolls on there, it says dusk is gone on it.
And differences in equipment.
Yes, I came to express, oh, okay.
I think the evening, you didn't get a chance to sign for-
Yeah, I was working this evening, I, I wasn't able to get here on time. I was working for a lack, I was on a down place in North Arlington. I heard that there is some talk about a new kayak launch port in Turner Valley, I just wanted to come and stress interest in that. I think the Yaw River offers a lot of great recreational opportunities as far as fishing, kayaking, a lot of my friends and I enjoy doing that, but the closest place that we have to go to is, to do illegally, is Smith, and we usually end up going to Smith Beach, and, you know, there's some less easily accessible places, the sewers go to go, but I heard about that there is, you know, it's a possibility, and I just wanted to come and say that it's something I assume to, those in North Arlington would be interested in.
Yeah, thank you. And this is your approval amendment. For a public hearing on June ninth, two thousand sixteen.
Motion approved, second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'd add a special meaning for June ninth, two thousand sixteen.
Motion approved, second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval amendments for regular meeting on June fifteenth, two thousand sixteen.
Motion approved, second.
All those in, oh, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Amy in the field?
I'm opposed, we pay voucher number seven, two, four, nine, nine, through voucher number seven, two, five, eight, nine.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Afterword. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Elder?
Yes, I do. Rich, is the, the paving, hold on, correct. The prep, the you guys would do.
Oh, yes, all the prep work's done, in fact, all the paving's completed for this year. You know, other than the fact that we have some punch list items that the contractors still needs to work on, along with the department, you know, that we're doing in-house, that we're guys doing, and it's just, it's just not also completed.
I wanted to ask you about the bucket truck. There's been some talk, we're going to get some of these shutters out here that are broken, removed, do we have to do it with that?
We are going to try to use the bucket truck to be able to remove some of the shutters, you know, in the hot parts of the building. We have a lot of our best of things to do. First writing day, you know, John testified a few times about it, we're just, it's so busy with everything else, and, you know, we're taking advantage of all the good weather that we have, get some of the more important items done, to locate it down here shortly.
Everybody else in the room, do you have anything to report?
I think it's going well, as I mentioned, we're starting up the paving program for this year. The project that we're on, our dairy roads going on as we speak, you know, it'll be the road re-destruction and the paving, as far as I know, everything's going okay, they just basically, they're not starting, and, you know, we're just, you know, the paving's done, we're getting through some of these other maintenance issues that need to be addressed, which we've been sitting on for a while. But we're working on it.
Thank you. Park and Recreation Report, anybody have any questions for Dan Miller?
Dan, I have a question for you, please. I know there's the proposed fishing dock that's in your report, is that going to be handicapped or accessible?
The proposed dock that Commissioner Sarah had requested will not be handicapped or accessible with respect to ADA requirements, only because the dock that we're hoping to put in will be more of a natural dock as opposed to a man-made dock. Or with a natural dock, it doesn't require any of the parts.
Dan, do you have anything for the board?
No, just to, to thank them for your continued support of our part-time summer help this year, you have approved eight summer positions, and with those eight young men, we've been giving our punch, much like Rich, we're very busy working that first special conference and looking to do more things as well.
Thank you. Police report, anybody have any questions for Andy? Okay, any good report?
Since we're on police report, I do want to add that it was in the Norman portion of Facebook, all about the Norman area, that one of your officers stopped at a lemonade stand, bought a lemonade, and stopped to talk to several children and their parents there. That's community placing, that's a great job.
There you go.
He left a big tip.
Emergency man, report, Dean Callen. Anybody have any questions on reports? Planning and Engineering Report, Harvard, Harvard Business Report, anybody have any questions on Harvard?
Subdivision and Land Development, Mr. Lincoln.
There are two resolutions before you tonight for your consideration. First one concerns Site Plan Two and Subdivision Four of two thousand sixteen, the Huntington Marketplace Development. And you'll recall that that was granted conditional use approval last month. We've worked out all the engineering issues, I think we've got a very workable traffic circulation plan, we've got a much nicer looking building, landscaping that I think will protect the adjoining residential plan, I think we've really come up with a pretty nice plan with the developer. But that is up for final approval tonight for both the subdivision and the script mall, it will be seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five square foot script mall, three subdivision, three lot subdivision at this point, that could change in the future, but at least initially, they're looking at three. And I won't read you the three pages of conditions and waivers, but it does approve several waivers that were requested by the developer, and includes ten conditions that they have reviewed, and I believe we're all on board with, so I would recommend that for approval tonight.
Motion approved, second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'd add a zero.
Thank you, gentlemen. The second resolution is concerning Site Plan Seven of two thousand sixteen at the Walmart Store for a, an online grocery pickup area, which proposes a fifteen-hundred square foot larger building, a fifteen-hundred thirty square foot canopy, will be located on the north side of the building, will allow people to come in, have, have placed an order online, they're given a pickup time, they pull in, push the button, say, I'm here, and they bring it out, put it in the car, they make payment, and they're off. All the conditions that we had asked for, all the revisions and drawings that we've done, I think we'll address there. I would recommend that for approval as well.
Motion approved, second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That's a zero.
That is all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lincoln. Next time, Solicitor's Report, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, President, there's no action, I have a Solicitor's Report for this one.
House of Manager Report, Mr. Jefferson.
Thank you. First item, his action to approve the June check register.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Zero.
I have two, any questions concerning the June twenty sixteen budget report? Item three, his action to approve tax refunding amount of three hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty cents to the Pennsylott Turnpike Commission, her property identified as tax patent number fifty-four dash twelve dash zero seven dash zero dash zero zero one, in accordance with the June thirteenth, twenty sixteen letter from Westmoreland County.
Motion approved.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'd add a zero.
Item four is action to approve memo number one, the Subrecipping Agreement fourteen dash twenty-three B, the CDBG agreement.
Motion approved, second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'd add a zero.
Item five is action to approve a resolution which authorizes the submitted application to the traffic signal at the intersection of Barnes, Layton Road and Montomb, Lendell Road.
Motion approved, second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'd add a zero.
Item six is discussion item discussed earlier in the meeting, it's the Parker Drive proposed weight limit. As we did here earlier this evening, that is, is an issue that we were aware of, and coincidentally enough, we're discussing it tonight. Hopefully, everybody's got a chance to see the memo prepared by Andy Blanco, our engineer, who's recommending the weight limit on Parker Drive, which is a township road. A lot of traffic for the folks who are familiar with the Clooney Mayor area, a lot of the truck traffic- A lot of traffic for the folks who are familiar with Colonial Valley area, a lot of the truck traffic, um, has been really forced to Colonial Valley, it seemed to be one of the few roads before the weight limit was installed by Pendott, um, most recently, that Pendott still allowed truck traffic to go on, they posted Lincoln Way, they posted Ridge Road, they posted Carpenter Lane, that was the only one they hadn't posted, they finally posted their piece, we just need to post our piece, that will allow us to limit, um, through traffic. And the, uh, the comment that we heard earlier from residents stating that this cut through, um, from Lincoln Way, possibly Keysport or White Oak is, is a hundred percent out. I've followed trucks myself, just to see where they're going, and they're just avoiding, I believe, the intersection around thirty and route forty-eight just for the lifestyle and what, so, um, I would recommend that the board consider adopting this. And, um, to do so, we can certainly act to prepare an ordinance, solicitor can do that, we can consider it our, our August meeting. It's open for discussion after that long, 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 sorry.
John, Andy did, uh, give us some pictures, it's already taken hold in our grid.
It is.
Get any additional trucks going up there and that. Anything I'd add to it is that we also need to deal with Allegheny County not having a sign down there coming off Lincoln Way. If we can request that, or once they get up there.
Agreed, a hundred percent, and it's been in the works for a while now with Pendott, and I'm trying to get some signage there. For what you're saying, once you get, you can't turn around at that point, um, so that's not reasonable. I actually acquired on that recently, and I heard it back, probably within the last week I acquired again. I keep it in a file of incomplete projects.
Tell them to talk to, if they permit them to come up there, they're gonna be cited for prohibited violation, right, Rod?
But, um, but Parker Drive and the wall, so, again, for the record, I, I don't know if the board knows, is there's an industrial park on that, on that road, it's a loop road, that, that road was designed to handle track, truck traffic for the industrial park and businesses for the park, it's not designed for a multitude of truck traffic. So the ordinance will, will permit that local, someone has a local bill slated, they'll be able to obviously, you know, access the park, the police will, will be aware of that, but that's probably a pretty difficult of that, that concept. Yeah, I'm okay, John, with you, if you guys want to ask, I'm not ready for next one. We will prepare that for, um, for next month. Next item on the agenda, I'm gonna call to the microphone Bill Gamble, and Bill's here tonight, I saw him coming in, and we're going to talk about the proposed Civil Service Commission rules and regulations. Again, some background, we have a lot of audience members here tonight, um, earlier this year, I think even December and January, the Township Civil Service Commission, which is a three-member appointed board, volunteers of our Huntington spent a significant amount of time revising their current rules and regulations with the thought of, um, needing to do this hiring list for the police, our police department, that's how we hire police officers through civil service. We have some new members on our Civil Service Commission, I think the boards will learn that, we asked Mr. Gamble to provide assistance, technical assistance to them from a standpoint of updating their rules and regulations. Some of you know Bill personally, I've known him my entire career, he was a state employee whenever I started working years ago in Chapel Hill Township, and, uh, he's retired now, he's, I call him the civil service expert, because that's what he is, and he had a lot of experience with that when he worked in the state of Pennsylvania. So Bill's here to answer any questions that anybody has concerning what we're proposing, the rules and regulations, any changes. But obviously, anything that we've done, I'll let him speak, is anything that he's recommended is based on case law, current best practices, things that, you know, evolved from the standpoint of various court cases that go forth, he wants to make sure that if we're gonna do a hiring list, our ordinance that we have governs those rules is the most current and defendable, and then there's some sort of challenge, so. Bill, I don't know if you have anything else you'd like to say to the board, and you might, and then at some point, I'm sure they have some questions for you, but the goal would be to move this forward at some point, and then I think the Civil Service Commission would like to get back at doing a entry-level hiring list, that's what we, we would need, and, again, I think Bill's gonna provide that technical assistance testing part of that, you know, for consultant agreements standpoint, so, Bill, I don't know if you have anything?
Yeah, the, the civil service law for many years didn't change that much, but two thousand and twelve, thirteen, there were major changes, um, in the Perco, the first-class township code, a lot has been into the first-class township code, but nevertheless, there was probably heated on changes, so, I think in redoing their old rules, uh, the best thing was to rewrite them, uh, for, uh, incorporate it rather than just kind of amend it, they made a document, probably a little tough to read, so. The document that, that they put, uh, they put together here, uh, is designed to be a little easier to read in regards to the structure of it, uh, it really starts, you know, with the civil service requirements, civil service commissions, the next section goes into hiring a police officer, strictly hiring a police officer, all of the components of hiring that, responsibilities, of course, the qualifications, and then the promotions, and then the discipline discharge, so it's structured so that if you're hiring a police officer, one section pretty much takes care of it.
Any questions, I'm not certain, but. Before we start the update to the civil service rules, Bill conducted a three-hour training session right here in our conference room, all the civil service commission members attended that, as well as Commissioner Sarah, he was interested in, okay, and I was myself, so, that gave him a nice primer for updating the rules and regulations, his training session.
One of the things is that a lot of times, and I've been doing this, I guess, for thirty years, with, uh, a lot of things, civil service commissions in many cases don't have a good frame of reference on, on the civil service rules. As, I like to finish, I'm a former mayor of the house, so I hope that gives us, but, but in any event, uh, I've been doing statewide training for the last fifteen years for the Department of Civil Service, but the training session that we had here was good, I think, uh, a lot of this folks should use that, because it, I don't only write the rules, I basically sit down and look over the rules with everyone. So if they have an understanding, I can understand it, but certainly, uh, the important thing is the data.
Questions for Bill?
I have them, I have them, Bill, sorry. He told me why he forgot the physical agility test.
The reason we took out the physical agility test is because the physical agility test today is, is one of those areas that, that is ever-moving. And I recommend, and I always recommend, that the physical agility test, because it could change. There's probably two major physical agility tests in, uh, period, uh, one is the, uh, what we call the old standard physical agility, it's where you have a body drag, two-person carrying, trailer pull and a quarter mile run, and of course, there's a window. The other one is, uh, one, the Cooper standards, which is much more comprehensive in that, uh, in that there's a quarter mile run, there's set-ups, there's push-ups, uh, and also a mile run. The reason I don't put them in there is to state clearly that they should be identified at the time that the applicant comes in to pick up the application, because those things can change. Because many state police have ensued in regards to using the Cooper standards or variation Cooper standards. And so there's a number of different issues, but, uh, I think that's probably the reason we don't do it.
Well, the intent was to still have a physical agility test, it was just not to spell out the specific four or five components on them, the rules and regulations.
Right, but by law, uh, you have to have a physical agility test, that, that was another major change that took place in October two thousand and twelve. Even though a lot of these powers still had a physical agility test, uh, it became mandatory at that point. Another major change of the civil service law is for police officers. Up until those changes, and of course, this is incorporated into the rules, they were not allowed to run for office. It was grounds for this one discharge. That has been changed now, of course, they can't do any politic, any uniform, or in the car or anything, but they now can run for magistrate, they can run for, uh, they can run for, uh, school board. But there is a very strong stipulation in there that they cannot run for what they call an incompatible office, and the incompatible office is any elected position within the township. But that is a major change, because, uh, there was even case law, federal case law, that you couldn't do that. Legislature is all that can do.
Yeah, the requirement for a physical agility test is on page fifteen, it just doesn't simulate what a test is.
Well, that's, that's why, sorry, I think it should be, that's what I'm saying, I know it's in the old book. I'm just saying, I'd like to see the new book, that, that's my question.
We actually went.
There are two different tests that they go by, and is up in here on what test they give on this request asking that both of those tests we put in there, that's all.
I think that what we, well, we, we went through that issue, because I was more familiar with the older regulations, like Bill's talking about, we see those four or five items in there specifically, and I think most people around here would go out up to the Allegheny County police grounds, and they would do this, do this test. And the Civil Service Commission went through that matter, and I, I had a particular question about it, because I was probably in Tony's camp at that point, I think when Bill explained it, said, look, these things change, lawsuits happen, if you come up with a, some rules that are incompatible, you're gonna have to change that, versus lady, the Civil Service Commission, they're gonna have to determine what test is valid. But you're giving them, keeping my other, you're giving them other authority, you're giving them authority to pick a written test that's valid. It's not specified in here what test they'll get, you're giving them that authority. You would want them to certainly pick something that would, that would, to the best of their ability pass legal muster, and I think, you know, as a consultant, Bill would give them some guidance, I'm sure our solicitor's office would. There's no doubt you have to have something, but I think giving them a little more flexibility might make sense. Tim, I appreciate what you're saying, because I was, I was in your camp, I was, I, I questioned why I wasn't in there, because I wasn't as knowledgeable about this as Bill was.
I, I am, I am joining gamble today, but I'll, I also feel that it should be in it, I'm sorry, that's something I.
But it is referenced in here that, that the candidate shall be advised as to what the, uh, physical agility test is at the time they pick up the application.
I got it, can I? It's not in the rule?
No.
And I, I. I'm saying, did I?
I understand, I understand. But, but, in all the rules that I write, uh, we, a lot of it wouldn't have for that, for that reason. It's, 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 it's never-changing, everything that you do with the physical agility test is subject to challenge. A lot of case law on that, but, uh, but that's why something could change, and rather than go through, if you're gonna do a hiring process, and you go need your rules, and basically are written in stone in that regard, then you're gonna have to go back and actually do amendments all the way through the process, so this way, you know, you, you actually wanna give them the physical agility, uh, components at the time that they pick up the application.
Craig, would you say it's the board's pleasure, one way or the other? Your recommendation, or what you're thinking?
Sure, it's, it's the board's pleasure, one way or another, but my recommendation is to go with what the expert would say. I mean, I, but no, no disrespect, but, I mean, uh, I understand the challenges to the physical agility, and I understand that physical agility is now a requirement of state law, where in, in the old days, it was something that you could choose to do or choose not to do. So you have to do it, whether it's spelled out in your, uh, rules and regulations as one particular test, you have to do it. And the civil service commission's gonna decide what test they're gonna administer. And my guess is that you're gonna consult with Mr. Gamble on it anyways, appoint him as your administrator, administrator of the examinations, as it usually happens.
Yeah, I think if you put in there that you're gonna have a two-by-two window, then you're locked into that two-by-two window. If something changed, and they said that that's not legal to have in it, that it has to be a four-by-four window, we're gonna have to go back and change the rules again before we give a test or hire or anything. Where this is basically, the way I'm reading this, it says that when they pick up their application, they're gonna know what the rules are.
Understand, I do understand it, did I don't understand it, if there's no disrespect on Craig's account. There's lots of ideas, I'm just saying, if I were you, I'd like to see it, I'm sorry, and, and I understand, or, I'm willing to do it.
Other members?
Bill?
Yes.
Bill, I have a couple of questions down. Why wouldn't we test the applicants first before we give them the jury? Because if you have a hundred, if you don't pass, then why would you give, you know, give it, it's like putting heart, heart for the horse, you know?
Let me just check whether that is. Yeah, you, you mean, give the written test first?
Yeah, in that way, whoever doesn't pass the written test, then they don't have to take the jury.
Well, section, yeah, section three point ten, uh, it, it has the physical agility test, uh, first, but it also indicates that discretion of the civil service commission, the written examination may precede the physical agility.
That gives them some flexibility.
Yeah, I, I will say that, uh, most of the testing I do is at the academy. And the process is that at ten o'clock, you receive what we call the old standard, uh, then they do the physical agility at that time. Anyone that passes then moves on, we give the written test, like they're at the academy, they sort of do both. However, uh, you can, you can certainly, uh, you can certainly change those, and there is provisions in here.
I understand, makes sense, rest assured. A lot of municipalities have application fees, thirty-five to sixty-five dollars, um, could we do that?
Yes, and again, the reason that isn't in there is because, uh, because that number they change. And again, you don't wanna just go and spend the time updating the rules to change it from thirty-five to fifty dollars or whatever. The common, I don't know, the, the common number is fifty dollars, uh, I, as far as most do that, I know some of the thirty-five, I do know that the road bill does a hundred and fifty, uh, so again, that can change, and again, rather than put it in here and have a written, so, that would, they'd have to go back and actually amend these. And do you write these in ordinance or in the?
Ordinance.
Yes, so again, that's another area, that revolution, as you know, as much easier to change, they have to go back and amend the ordinance, uh, to change the number, to put you in charge of the app, but it is common, uh, to cha, to charge the app.
I think that fee would probably be determined by the board here, not the civil service commission, anyone, unless Craig would say otherwise, it's probably better. We have a fee structure for all sorts of things, we charge fees for, it seems like that'd be a place to put it.
Yeah, I, yeah, as long, yeah, as long as the commission approves it, you know, again, it's, it's a two-way street, they have to approve the rules, you have to approve the rules, so it's, it's, it's sort of working together, you have to work together on it anyway.
Another question is, the proposed new ordinance has township advantage, you can take and write into the applicants to advise them of all upcoming events. Why wouldn't we just leave that to the civil service?
Well, generally, unless you have an active civil service commission that's gonna be, do the administration of, of everything, in almost all cases, unless you have a real large community, the manager, the secretary of the municipality is gonna work with the commission and do the administrative work. Certainly, uh, uh, because your applications are gonna be coming in to the township, the civil service commission generally not gonna be there when they come in, so all the administrative structure as far as those types of things are, are generally, and notoriously, or I guess historically, have been, uh, a function of the, of the office.
Yeah, I think in the past, our office certainly provides medical assistance, but, I mean, probably it's a direction of the term of the civil service commission, but to make that change is no big deal.
Right, right, I mean, if you, and again, I would say ninety percent of the municipalities, uh, civil service commissions are not there all day, they can, and do that.
I would say.
Naval secretary, things like this, and those types of things are true, and again, they are under the sunshine office, I think everyone knows, so, uh, but again, that, that's very common to have the administrative structure of the municipality actually supporting and, and, and the administration.
Would you have any other questions?
I have others, John.
I, I'm satisfied, I was just gonna ask John, if it was our intent to have this on maybe for next week, uh, not, not next week, next month?
I think it's certainly up, up to the board, I think the next step for us to, as Bill mentioned, we adopted by ordinance, they have the advertising adopted. I think the civil service commission, I believe they wanna get started, they had a lot of, um, they had a lot of energy back in January, because they, you know, they're, they're new members, you know, they're new members, and they, they were involved in, this re-break's probably good, as Bill said, it gave them a lot of knowledge that they didn't have in the past, because they're new, and, um, I think they're, they're ready to go with, um, with an entry-level test, and even if they get started after our meeting in August, we're not gonna see a list for four, five, six months, and, um, as you know, we probably have some police officers that, that could be in a position to retire, so. We should try to get a list together in some reasonable period of time. Takes you a little bit longer to review, thinks that's fine, but I would, I would recommend moving forward. forward with them.
I don't know if you wanna form a motion, or if you're okay with some of the board's kind of direction, but I'm definitely okay with moving forward, if you want to advertise these.
It's probably the board wants to, I hope the board wants to proceed, whether it's a motion, and we talked about a few changes tonight, or, I don't know if the board wants to entertain you making those changes in here, that's, that's up to you guys. Then we would have to look at whether or not, as Bill mentioned earlier, you know, the Civil Service Commission adopts the rules, commissioners approve them, if you wanna amend them, I would question whether or not you have to send us back to the Civil Service Commission, kinda get this little bit of a vicious circle, the solicitor can provide an opinion on that, but you could be in a situation where I'm not sure if that's a hundred percent clear. If, if that's, you gotta have a pen, and you can just cross things out that you don't want, they've already adopted, and Bill, we did talk about that.
Yeah, it is, it is, it is in the code that they amend the test, go back to the end of the-
So, you know, if you make some changes, then I would say, I would make a change, you send them back to the Civil Service Commission, they would maybe concur, maybe they would, I, I don't know, at that point, it's uncircled, it would happen.
So I, I guess I'll make your job a little bit easier, I guess I'll make a motion that we advertise for approval, February twenty-third, I guess, draft, civil service draft, the final draft. I believe it's stated on the bottom here, February twenty-third, but then at the top, it's qualified in fifteen.
But the February date's when they actually adopt it, that was public meeting, the Civil Service Commission had to adopt the rules.
Okay.
Discussing. Well, I'm, I'm going back on my original. I'm stuck on having the agility stuff put on, I think it's a lap only one, but I'm stuck with what's for that utility test on. I'm sorry. Anybody else? All those who agree or say aye?
Aye.
Those who say no?
No.
We'll call man if you can.
Commissioner Harrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Higginson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasenda?
No.
Commissioner Caceres?
Yes.
And Commissioner Martino?
No.
So that motion was a tie, so failed?
As you stated, John, we gotta get somewhere in here, so you're, you're satisfied with this proposed draft, other than having physical agility on air, that's your only issue?
Yeah, I'd like to hear it on air, I understand.
What physical agility do you prefer?
Bill, what would you recommend, if it's actually written in the rules, what's your comment?
I don't recommend any, I think, because it is a, it's a-
Well, we're gonna push it on the spot.
And I basically-
It's like a hard option, there is no option right now.
What would you go with? I mean, would you, I mean, would you allow me to have?
I, I, I've never done, all what I do, anytime a debt comes up, and it's come up a hundred times, I refer that back to the police department and the police chief to determine which he feels is best for his department.
I mean, what we had in the past was, I called, there's like five, five proponents, I think, or six, or something like that, when he just identified with the trigger pull of body drag.
Body drag, and the line, right?
Right, yeah, that's, that's the-
Standard.
That's, well, that's the gold standard.
Destroy me, destroy me.
You'll get a lot of arguments back and forth about-
Can I ask a question?
You and the Cusa-
It's still acceptable.
It, it's done many times up a gate, Captain.
Are you able to put something into the rules and regulations like you did with the written, with, with the Civil Service Commission having the discretion to change it as necessary, to designate it as the trigger pull, the body drag, the quarter mile one run, or whatever, unless the Civil Service Commission designated, otherwise would that, or you want, you want, you want just designated, I mean, designated?
Yeah, so, so then, we'll amend that section, and-
Bill, that's still available, though, you say that test isn't given, so it's not, someone won't give it.
I, I would say that fifty percent is going that way, and some will say that, that that is no longer a valid test, but I don't know what a valid test is, because just about every test has been challenged, as I mentioned, the Cooper standards were challenged by the Department of Justice, which I always thought they had other things to do. I shouldn't say that, but, but, so they, they actually challenged it, I don't know what that case is. But, but some will use the Cooper standards, the Cooper standards is, is generally gonna be age and gender norm, that's, that's the true Cooper standards. Now, a lot of the municipalities won't, won't use the, the pure Cooper standards, what they'll do is take one of the lower denominators and use that across the boards. So that's what most do, I've only seen a few actually use the true Cooper test. That's why I say there's so many different variables, that I wouldn't recommend one or the other, I, I, that's why I give it to the police chief in that department, is what he feels is best for his department.
That's what I don't want. I want something that's black and white, saying, here's this test they're gonna use.
Okay, so, and I understand, but what I'm saying is, what we wanna put in here is what the police chief feels is, but we, it can be put in here, black and white, but I was gonna recommend, and if you recommend any test, I've never done it, I won't do, so, it's, it's, it's so easy for me to do.
So the question-
I leave out the police professionals in that department, because they're the ones that have to deal with it in their department, I think, it's just professionalism.
So the question would be, if the board wants to, you could revert back to what we have, what's currently in, what's currently in place, send that to the Civil Service Commission for their consideration, they will give you their opinion on whether or not they'll accept that or not. The alternative, which Bill's saying, is you could wait and ask the chief, and he'll be back on for vacation, I believe, next week, ask him his opinion, he can give that to you, he can give it to the Civil Service Commission, you could consider that, and then in turn, you know, wait till you get his recommendation and talk about it, you know, the next meeting we have. That would probably take one additional month, I think if you would send it back to the Civil Service Commission, bring it back, you would take, you know, probably one less month, so I'd say you're looking at probably between two to three months from now, when we would, when we would consider adopting this.
I guess I'm not gonna haggle on how, what worked or not, but I do, it seemed like you said you don't want the chief to be the one deciding, so if, under the current draft of the form, you know, when we would broadcast for advertising for opening, you know, officer opens, at that time, would this board have, I guess, the right to have input on what the physical standards will be at that time? Or would have to strictly through the civil service?
I mean, I think you could provide some opinion, I don't know if you wanna get involved in, I think I'd look up, I think I would leave it to the Civil Service Commission. If you wrote it this way, I fell down the, do your job. Whatever you picked is, you know, we've given you that floor, and so, I think it's up to the board here, how you wanna see this play out, if you'd like to get the chief in, what on testing, we'll get that for you, spend a little more time on this, if you would like to just maintain what we've had, what we have, which is the, the five tests, you know, we'll send that back to our local civil, civil service commission for their consideration. It'd be either one of those options, sounds like where we are right now.
Right, I mean, you can go back to what you had in your old rules, I mean, I think that was the, what I call the old standard.
Right.
Again, that, I'll, I'll weigh through your direction on that.
Right.
I'm comfortable with something in there on the bill, I just don't wanna leave it open up in the air for myself, that's why I look at it. I think if there is an ability test, please tell me, tell me what it's gonna be here, and I will not change my opinion off of that. Do I have my opinion right?
I understand.
So who would you, I mean, what, what would you like to do? Either wanna get the chief in, but, or I believe you, you, I mean, you, Bill's not gonna give you recommendations, so you're, you're left with, the police giving you a recommendation, or you're, you're either gonna send something back to the Civil Service Commission with a recommendation, if you like what's in there, or you're gonna go to them and say, "We'd like to see exactly what you wanted the test, at least what it's gonna be."
Give you something in there, I don't care what you put in there, put something in there on the bill, that's what I'm telling you, I will not move off of that, I don't care if you put the old one in there, or you put the new one in there, and I know some work measures probably live laughing their ass off of you, because I'm like that, and I don't care. With something in there, I do.
I'm a hundred percent with you, I just wanna know where to get the-
Where you put it.
Alright, is any, okay, so Tony wants something, so I can go to the chief, I can use what we have, does anybody else have a recommendation of how they'd like to proceed with the?
I believe Mr. Gamble said that the one that we have isn't legal, he's not giving us the recommendation on it, it's one of the standards that they have used.
And people still use it?
We've used it for years.
People still use it, he said, half, half of the-
I say we have to put that in there, and sometimes it's challenges, it's not legal, then we'll have to go back, and we'll have to revise it, and-
So you would like to go through what's in there, and maybe get the Civil Service Commission's opinion on that?
And bring it back.
Is that unreasonable?
Yeah, we gotta do something.
Rest of the board, is that something a reasonable way to go?
Use Mr. Banton for duties, that we can't keep picking again, I'm ready on this.
So what you guys wanna do? If that's the case, then what we'll do is send that back to civil service, they'll, they'll schedule a meeting, and then we'll bring it back.
Do you want me to make a draft of them, or are you just gonna discuss it, and incorporate it in here?
You know what, Bill, I'm not sure, let me think about it, I think we're, we're close, but maybe that's what the board wants to do, if that's the case, then we'll maybe figure out a way to address it with them, so they know what that issue is, and then they can back, get back to the commissioners, and if they're comfortable with it, then they could, I assume, read off their rules with that new provision, and I can bring that back to the board for consideration. Is that something a reasonable way to proceed?
Okay. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Bill, I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
Under definition, chief of police is sworn officer heading the police department, who may be appointed with or without civil service status, what's that mean?
It means that when you hire a police chief, they can be hired either under civil service or not civil service. Every full-time police officer in Pennsylvania has a due process right, except a police chief that's hired in a borough and first-class township, not under civil service.
So they're not under civil service, and they don't have a separate contract that defines how they can be disciplined, it's basically adwill employed and handled.
And the process is, for civil services, in, in hiring a police chief, that is a discretion of the elected officials themselves, they can hire one with or without civil service, but if they wanna hire one with civil, this was all in your rules, by the way, if they hire them by civil service, they will submit that person to the Civil Service Commission for a non-competitive test, which is basically an interview, and all the code says, and your rules say, is that the Civil Service Commission shall determine whether that person's qualified or not qualified, and then applies the elected officials, who then will, then take official action to hire that police chief under civil service.
So once you submit his name to the Civil Service Commission, the Civil Service Commission holds the interview, the non-competitive civil service examination, and the Civil Service Commission determines that the candidate is qualified to hold the position as chief of police, and he's hired, he's then hired under civil service. So if you don't want the candidate to be hired under civil service, you'd never submit him to the Civil Service Commission for the non-competitive civil service examination. Has to come, has to come from the board, correct?
Correct. Oh, yeah, it comes to the board regardless, and I think you could even certify someone as a banker, maybe, maybe you'd be on the job for two years, you didn't bring him in under civil service, but you sent him for a non-competitive-
Twenty years, and you decided-
Yeah, that happens too, so that's another component of it, but that's something really that commissioners have to take action on, that's why you do that.
Police chief is strictly the commissioner, everything else goes under the civil service.
Okay, any more questions, any questions? Alright, I think we know where we're going, but I'll be in contact.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. I'll get back to my agenda, okay, I apologize. Back to the board. Okay, next on the agenda tonight is John Trent. I don't know, I don't think we're vetted on yet, I know that, we've talked about his proposal, and we've started down the, the process of developing the township's first strategic plan, and John came on board with us as a consultant a few months ago, and he's, he's moving along with the process, he will tell you where he is, he's got with department directors, and as you know, I've, I've sent an email to the board, working on getting a, a meeting set up at the end of August, so we can dedicate that to the entire night, one for sure, more necessary to talking about just strategic planning, because this can be that discussion that we're going to have. What John wants to do for you tonight is just give you an idea of, of where he is in the process, and what he wants you to, I think, start thinking about for our meeting in August. So I'll turn it over to John right now, and I can give that a chance to, to read his information, his biography, John's had a lot of experience, a lot of local experience, and he's done a lot of strategic work in his past career, working for his consultant primary township, which in our, in our, in our background, was the leader of a lot of things, so John comes with a background, which is somewhat unique for, for local government. John?
Thanks, Sean. Thanks for your introduction, and as John said, tonight is an introduction, an overview, handed out, a handout that's a real simple summary of what we're working on, and also just a couple of blank pages for you to take notes, because as John said, he worked with a scheduled follow-up meeting with you, so I'd like you to bring back some thoughts and ideas for that meeting, when we have a more in-depth discussion. So as John said, I'm John Trent, I'm president of Strategic Solutions, I've been working in local government for more than the past fifteen years, prior to wars, both in the public and private sector, I spent a chunk of time working for law firms, planning firms, and primary township, as John mentioned, I'm a certified planner, attorney, and landscape architect, so I've got a variety of backgrounds that I bring to the table, all of which can help the township with some strategic planning. So what I'd like to do is dive in and talk about what we're working on, get some feedback from the board with respect to key issues and topics you wanna make sure we address and give some direction, and as John said, we'll follow up with more detailed discussion, if that's okay.
One thing, John, I was gonna give a small preface, he's really gonna think on a global scale, so, I mean, we're gonna be talking really globally here, from a standpoint of what we're, what we're discussing tonight.
Right, we, we are, I should put it ahead, this is forests, not trees, I mean, we are looking at the big picture forest, we're not focused on what species of tree is in that forest, at this point. If the board wants to take a deeper dive later on down the road, on a particular issue, this is an effort to look at the bigger picture, identify priorities, get consensus around those priorities, so that there is focus and clarity about the direction of some of the key items, and then also instill and create a process by which new initiatives and ideas can be evaluated, so that those can be run through a process, ideally that lines up with the budgeting process, so that when you're thinking about next year, you're thinking about priorities for funding and, and planning, construction, administrative items. So you have a two-page handout in your folder there, and as I said, some, some pages that are blank to take some notes, and a folder to bring back some thoughts and ideas you have that are more detailed discussion, and this is an overview of the process, and what I talk of briefly about why we've been doing this plan, I am, as I said, a certified planner, I certainly have a passion for planning, but I can give you lots of really concrete reasons why planning is important. It's not as sexy, it's not as controversial, it's not as often interesting, there's a lot of other topics that this board may deal with, but coming up with a focused plan will create efficiencies, make better use of tax dollars, provide for clarity in terms of where this community is headed, and have a variety of benefits up and down the line in terms of financial, development, and just strategic thinking overall, so that there's a plan in place, and there's clarity with where the community's going. So building a future for solid growth, communities that have a plan are attractive, with people that wanna live there, and also with businesses that wanna locate and grow there. I mentioned increasing efficiencies, if we're not chasing tail, we're chasing multiple initiatives simultaneously, but able to focus resources, whether that be staffing, or financial, or the board's focus for that matter, I'm sure if you would love not to have ten-hour meetings if you didn't have to, so if we're able to focus on where the board's time is spent, where staff time is spent, and where the township's resources are spent, it's much more efficient if we have a clear focus on the way we're doing that, and making effective use, so we can be efficient, and be really strategic by our thinking, but absolutely nothing done, because we don't have consensus around where our priorities are. So if we can all agree that we're gonna talk about one issue for the next hour, we can't come to consensus on that issue, so we're not being effective, we're not accomplishing anything. Having a good strategic plan in place will not only allow you to be efficient with your time and resources, but actually get stuff done, be effective. Instilling predictability and stability, from an administrative standpoint for the township as well, as well as from an outward projection of the township's goals and aspirations and plans for the future, having stability and predictability is important, as I said earlier, in terms of attracting, retaining residents and businesses. Developers will tell you that they like to go to communities where they know what they're gonna get, and that has a real specific positive effect on the community. So this planning process, three key points, so when I keep the end game in mind, we are not, as I said, and as John pointed out, going to be designing specific widgets, or focusing on a particular item, we are looking at the picture and setting priorities, the end game is, we've got priorities identified, on a departmental- The end game is we've got priorities identified on a departmental basis and consensus around those priorities. We also want to acknowledge that we are gonna be flexible. This isn't something that everybody, the commissioner's gonna have this document that's gonna be ancient stone. The process in and of itself is important and flexibility in that process is important. The fact that you're talking collectively about setting priorities is what the end, the end result is ideally going to be. And then identifying successes, having the plan in place, you can actually identify what you've got done. And document that and make sure that they're the track record is positive. So what we started to do was working with staff and through my review of documents and driving around the community, reviewing documents, looking at available information, conduct the SWOT analysis. You've got an excellent departmental management administrative staff that has provided a lot of great input and feedback and I've used that with my review to identify some, some key issues. SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and perhaps on page two, begin an outline of some of the key topics and issues we've identified. I can go through with you, could, with you in that SWOT format. So in terms of strengths, strengths are what the township's doing well now. And there's a lot. And as I said, this is just an overview. There are a lot of good towns in town that are still doing now. The important document goes, they don't go up last in the shuffle. So that when the next crisis hits and attention's, attention and focus is elsewhere, you don't forget what you're doing well now and make sure you keep doing it. You are a financially stable community. It doesn't come by accident. And to keep it that way, you need good financial planning and long-term thinking in terms of financial expenditures. As I mentioned, you've got great staff, well-qualified staff, professional staff, that it's important to make sure you keep that in sight and that continues on. If you have that stability and ability to manage this community, that they continue to grow and evolve. You also got a great location, great school. There's a lot of things that people want in terms of locating their residents and businesses. So I want to make sure that that's something to build on and highlight as the community grows. Weaknesses are what are our current challenges? That'd be perfect. What are we doing wrong or what things can't we control but are having a negative impact? There are some planning documents and regulations that need to be updated. It sounds like just saying through me, are you looking at updating your civil service regs and that kind of stuff? It's a constant evolution. In terms of land use documents, I heard zoning work is being updated. I know you're working on that. That's an important document that affects everyday life in the township. There's an identity challenge, but it's something that you are working on in terms of getting more content out there. Again, I heard that tonight with the zip code issue, you are alone there. That is a common challenge and the postal services, for their own good reasons, I'm sure. Not always well in port with you, a lot of fixes and that. But every township, as Andy mentioned earlier, that is a success story. Years ago, probably twenty years now, they did get the postal service to agree that 16066 is the insider square boundary of the primary township proper. So can't be done. But it was with a lot of bloodshed. It was twenty years ago, so. Okay. So shifting priorities and policy direction under our weaknesses. Again, the lack of focus can result in inefficiencies and not getting a whole lot done. So we want to make sure that we are focused. Opportunities, what future strengths are out there? What things do we know are on the horizon that we want to think about now so we can capture them? Parkland, you have unbelievably beautiful parks and lots of parkland that just is an opportunity that a lot of communities would really feel for. So how to use that parkland strategically, how to plan for its future growth, so you're providing facilities and programming that meets your growing and evolving community. Township economic development activities, you've got a great groundwork and framework for getting active in the development community. And that's really important. It's an important function of local government because most developed community generally thinks of you all as an impediment to the process. The local government process is nothing more than a hurdle. The seven hurdles of hell the developer has to get through to get his building perfect and that's all he cares about, cares about. But you folks have a vision for your community in mind, having a predictable process, you're open, working with developers. It really can end up being a litmus situation where the community gets what it wants and the developer gets what they want. There is valuable land in the township, that's another great opportunity. Not a whole lot to pack ready, but there is opportunity for future growth because you have land that's not developed. You're also improving and increasing community outreach engagement. And then correct, what are our, what challenges lie on the horizon? As you experience continued growth, your level of service demands are going to increase. It's, it's just a matter of fact. Right now, you're paving so many miles of road a year. Right now, you're providing so many recreation programs a year. That's only going to increase as your population grows. And as your population grows, those, those level of service demands get more and more intense in terms of variety and volume of demand under services. As most communities do, you've got aging infrastructure out there. You're newer than a lot in the region in terms of your infrastructure. But you need to be wary of the fact that you've got a lot of road miles out there. A lot of this rural, a lot of this aging, stormwater infrastructure, planning for that future capital investment, keep that stuff going is important. Also, in terms of keeping an eye on the ball with respect to how this process correlates, this process being the elected officials' process and engagement with the community correlates to everyday initiative business in the township. And what that lines, what those lines of communication are and how that works and how that can make efficiencies and improvements in terms of following a recognized procedure that everybody agrees to, in terms of how initiatives are brought forth and followed up on. So the last step in the process will be fleshing out more of that SWOT analysis, identifying, we've begun the process of identifying and prioritizing key issues for each department. But then, as I mentioned, one of the end results also will be creating a process for identifying, evaluating, and prioritizing opportunities. It's not gonna be rocket science. The rocket science comes in when we've got a strategic plan, the last document, or last page of that document says, when a new initiative is brought forth to this body, here's how we're going to go through a thoughtful process of evaluating it, making sure they're budgeting for it, making sure that there's an ability to ongoing, ongoing maintenance and operation of that facility if it's a new facility. And so the, the importance is the collective agreement around that process. So that was the overview of where we are now. I know you've got a long agenda, it's been a long meeting, but I'd like to open it up for some questions, thoughts, discussions, and key items that you want to make sure, this board wants to make sure, are addressed during the process. I'd like to document those so that when we come back, I lost my pencil, I'm all tired. When we come back, whoever we find, I think you're looking at August.
It's on the block.
Correct.
Okay.
We can have a more detailed discussion about how those items. So questions about the process we're going through, specific initiatives you'd like to talk about, make sure the process addresses?
I think one thing, John, just for the board to understand, I think what they're going to see in our meeting in August is you're going to see initiatives from the departments. What's important to original with Dan, your chief, Andy, like myself, and Mike in administration, you're gonna see that. You're gonna see what, what we really believe are important things that you want to see get done. You may or may not agree with that and that's fine. That's why I think, again, as John's used the term tonight, collective decision-making multiple times. Ultimately, if we move forward on a path here, whatever that path is, at least we all know the path we're going on. I think as you know, it's easy enough to get, you get sidetracked individually on, on projects, citizens call you, you gotta get moved around and that can kind of move us around a little bit from a standpoint of priorities. I think that's one of the things you really need to think about is priorities. The road program is a great example. I mentioned to John that that's one of the, I'd say that's one of the most important items this board has discussed. The previous board, this current board, that started with the previous board, where you guys really spent some time thinking about infrastructure, maintenance, and how much money we need to put towards a road program to be viable. And we put a lot of thinking into that and that's the kind of thing I think he's really talking about. That's global, that's big picture. I mean, it doesn't matter which road we pave. That's not what we're talking about. Is that, is that the right amount of money? With that, Mike, my question, at some point, will that level of investment require a tax increase? Or if the, really the ultimate goal of this board is to not increase taxes, because that's an important concern for everybody, I think every, every resident. We know they start making decisions from a standpoint of whether it's paving more roads, do more recreation, hire two more police, lay two off, lay off a couple of works employed because we aren't gonna raise taxes, we're gonna pay more roads. When you start making those decisions, the strategic planning is gonna be extremely helpful because it's gonna illustrate what's the most important things to you. And I think that's important. So keep that in mind. We spent time a few years ago going over the, the investment we're currently making in the, the road paving program. That's the kind of thing we're talking about here. We're gonna talk about that in different departments, recreation on a global scale. So again, you're gonna hear what is important to Dan. Dan's been the director for some years. He'll tell you, here's what he thinks is important. Again, you may or may not agree, but I think if we can come to some consensus on that, our goal is to move in that direction. And until this board tells us to move in some other direction, that's the direction we're gonna move in collectively.
You should ask the residents what they want so you're connected to the community.
Yeah, that's a great point. Actually, I was gonna kind of bridge that gap too because I, I'm gonna start, and if you'll give me a little bit of leeway to do that. I'm gonna start by saying I'm a planning official or a planning, I'm passionate about planning. I'm also passionate about local government. And here's what I have to say, this community's force shouldn't have professional staff. And what I always, what I also like to say is that these are real jobs. These are real jobs just like your jobs. And these folks are professionals, they're trained, and they make recommendations to this board. What happens is, this isn't a private company. This is a public at large, it's a community. And so it's important to bridge that community engagement with this board and the recommendations of staff. So when John says what Dan, I won't put that in the spot, but what Dan made, it's recommendation based on his professional experience and knowledge, just like all of us make recommendations that are on jobs. Brings that to you and the board collectively goes through a process of listening to the residents and the community, about what the community wants and what the community thinks is important. And bringing those two things together and that's what this process does. So this is by no means shutting out the public engagement process. I'm a strong proponent of public engagement. I've got the battle scars to prove it. So I, I think the public engagement is important. I think we should document that in this process to make sure that it's clear, this is not shutting public down.
That's a really good point, John. I think it's important to determine the best way to engage the public. I mean, we have around thirty-one thousand residents and we appreciate the handful that come to our meetings, but that's rare that we have a lot of people here. So there's certainly a lot of people that live in North Huntington that don't, that aren't as engaged. I think we do call the commissioners, they'll call our office, but we probably need to find out a way to make sure we get them involved. Even though they don't come to the meeting, they might not call a commissioner, they probably still have an opinion on whether I would like to see additional recreation, more road paving, more police, whatever. But you can fill in the blanks. So that's an important part and I'm glad you mentioned that. But I think it's important to figure out a way to really try to get that, that engagement, more than just for people, there's nothing wrong with coming to the meeting, but we certainly have some population who probably never come to a meeting. I think that's why we started broadcasting them recently, just to try to let people know you are interested, you don't have to come, you can always see what's going on.
Right, and ideally, residents are engaged well before an item will come to your attention in a formal way on your agenda. Because usually when you give us a motion to approve or authorize something, ideally, there's a process by way of public engagement that's collected and brought forth through your consideration. And there's a million tools out there, I probably use them all, surveys, the river, public meetings.
I was just gonna mention that, John. Surveys are the lifeblood of the industry that I used to be involved in. And I look at this stuff that you're increasing efficiencies. The company that I work for, they've been doing that for thirty years. It's amazing that it takes this long for government to catch on. And it's, it's kind of funny because, you know, I gotta get my car fixed and everybody waiting telling me, make sure you fill out that survey. But we're not as nice to our own residents. I mean, we need to hear their votes. That's, that's my most important part of any type of strategic plan, should be.
Yeah, you mentioned an important point that I'm gonna summarize, I'd say continuous engagement. But when you say surveys, a lot of places say, oh yeah, we sent you surveys, we did one five years ago. You know, we got ten percent response rate. That's, you might be saying now, but you're also saying, ask every time we interact with residents, or a lot of the time we interact with residents, how are we doing? And that, that's a good point. Other comments, questions, initiatives you'd like to make?
I, I think it's a great way to gauge your success. But you have every process, every efficiency system that you set up is gonna involve a little bit of increase in technology. There's a lot of time parks. Technology has to fit in with a lot of this stuff. It cuts down on time.
And when you're talking about surveys, are you talking about specifically just sending out mailings? Because a lot of times that stuff just gets screwed in the thirteen o'clock math. Or are you talking about going to like civic organizations and giving talks, seniors giving talks? Because a lot of seniors, that, you know, I mean, they're not gonna answer a survey about parks and recreation and stuff like that unless you tell them you're gonna raise their taxes.
Yeah. Yeah, unfortunately, nobody, most people that I've contacted, you're gonna be told, thank you for being one of the officials in that community. Until you say they're gonna, they're gonna raise taxes, then you get a room full of people. So to answer your question, I've used the whole game. There's lots of different ways. So everything from, every time you spit out a receipt, there's a, there's one question in the log where they can rank the service. To doing a full-blown hard copy mail, like you're saying, or sending a postcard mailer, or doing phone districts where you invite particular groups, people, seniors, recreation folks, sports groups, talk about particular issues. I think what I would say there, we need to talk about, there are different types of public engagement and thinking about when we identify, identify top priorities, what ways of engagement make the most sense for each type of initiative or work. Because it cannot make sense if you've got a really specific issue that deals with seniors, for example, to do a mailer to have to have a resident in the community because a resident community isn't a senior. So we'll, we'll discuss how to focus that engagement.
I mean, the technology's there. We could create a survey number to our website. I mean, it's there. Couldn't be made easy.
Yeah, Survey Monkey is an example of a survey service that's pretty easy to use, you can correctly pop it up.
It's very easy.
We have you, we have you Survey Monkey. We have a survey on our website now.
John, we have a lot of older people in our town, probably half the people are older and you don't, they're not, you know, involved with their career aspect, other engagement. Where can you reach those people? You know what I mean?
Makes sense.
It seems a lot of their left eye a lot of times.
That's an important, that's an important point because I think that as much as technology is important and my kids wouldn't do anything except look at their telephones, so mobile app, as Mr. Harold said, we have a lot of older folks here that we just can't give up on papers and telephone. So at least that's my opinion. We do a lot of communication that way. We certainly do some if through internet, we have internet-based workshops, if you're familiar with that. We certainly do a lot of telephone calls here that come in and face-to-face and there's still, I can use some room for that technology support, but I don't think we're at a point where our community, we're, we're, we have eighty-five or ninety percent of our people that want to do business with us on mobile app. Maybe twenty years from now they will.
That's a good point. Some of the stuff goes to the population, you have to go to, you might have to go to the senior center or the senior organization.
What about our work, I mean, I know you've put out a lot of old records and something in it. Have you talked to a worker?
I have not talked to workers below the department heads.
I do, did I?
I think what John's, what John's take was to get the director's opinion on where they see their department going. So I mean, I guess you could ask each employee where they'd like to see their department go. Maybe all over the place, which I probably would be depending on the size of the department.
Or do employee surveys.
Yeah.
Can you press it for the department?
Employee surveys are done anonymous, anonymous all the time.
Right. Okay, but yeah, I've worked with department directors to see how we can question and put them there.
Well, if you think what we're talking, we're talking about like how are we doing? But this is strategy. This is what do we want to do?
Right.
I mean, I think it's important and we, I don't want this focused on, the goal of this, there's multiple goals of this. And there's certainly one to try to determine where do we want to go collectively. So regardless of how well we're doing it right now, we need to know where we want to go, wherever that path is.
I think heading into our more focused meeting, if the commissioner felt comfortable bringing two or three top priorities in your mind in terms of issues you want, you think need to be addressed, initiatives you would like to be, to be seen, incorporated into this planning process so that we've got since the. process, so that we've got some specifics from you in terms of your thinking for the future of this community. And this, the timing of this rolls well into the budgeting process. So you can think about financial priorities along with the priorities to identify for the future of the community. Any other specifics you'd like me to think about before the meeting on the twenty-fourth?
I wanted to ask a quick question. When will that next meeting be?
I don't think it'll be, I think August twenty-third or twenty-fourth.
So that's pretty quick.
I was gonna say, do you have a sample size survey online, you get your SharePoint or Survey Online, you put something in there, and see what kind of feedback you give from the community, how many residents you have actually responding, like a nice sample size of who will be online, you know, I mean.
I think, well, I think what'll come out of this is additional citizen engagement. It's just, we're at the infancy stages here. So I think at some point, we'll need to kind of determine what sort of citizen engagement we're looking for, whatever that is, or the work for Rockers, I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay, if you have something further, I'll see you on the twenty-third.
Thank you, John. Yeah, I'll shore that up and let you know. We'll plan a meeting here, seven p.m. and go from there. Yeah. Next item on my agenda, I believe is the last item, is the park development plans. And I provided the board a memo on this. It's a follow-up to our discussion we had back at our meeting in June. And it was, it was related to improvements to various, various parks in North Huntington Township. And I guess it's coincidental that John Tramp has given his presentation on strategic plan, and it was perfect segue into this discussion topic, which, if you read my memo, I believe you understand where I'm coming from. And I would certainly recommend that if we're planning on making significant park improvements, I would do that in a strategic fashion. And I'm trying to lay out for you the various components of what was really discussed in the, in the meeting in June, from a standpoint of what the board is looking for us to consider. As you know, I believe the motion to, I'll try to summarize it, was to look at these various, into different parks, have the park staff make a recommendation by the beginning of September, and if the park staff believe they need any assistance to consult, come back to the board. And that's where we are. As you can see, for most of those proposals that I believe were put forth at our June meeting, after further review, I've spent a significant amount of time with Dan Miller going over this. Dan did write the memo, and Dan's certainly a part of this. You know, we believe that for, for a lot of these projects, you really should think that through, rather than just moving forward without, you know, really giving it more thought. We've talked about surveys. For some of the, some of the board members that have been here for a while, you know we've done those surveys. We've had, we've had multiple surveys, we've accomplished a recreation plan. And there's things in there that, you know, residents have identified over the years that really are valuable to them. And I think you should probably think about those prior to moving forward with these. The small things we talked about, putting in a small playground in Indian Lake, sure, that's easy. That's something we can do. That, to me, isn't what we're, you know, what we're really talking about. We're talking about bigger projects here. You're talking about Markview Manor, Sunset Valley. Those, of course, traditionally haven't been township parks. They're vacant property. We, when we took ownership of those properties, they were vacant. They had been abandoned by civic associations in each one of those developments. And before I would, you know, move forward with, with a plan, we certainly can before, we can certainly say, plus we can set in one, and, I don't know, a slide, and call it a day. I wouldn't do that. I think, you know, we talked earlier about citizen engagement. I could go, we have a resident from Markview here, I can call her, I'm calling her name, she came to our last meeting. And she had a lot of new residents moving into Markview with children. I would be going to those residents and saying, look, let's have a meeting. Let's, anybody interested in, come let's here. What do you want? We may not be able to do what you want, but at least tell us what you're interested in from a standpoint of facilities. I would do those sorts of things on the, on those smaller community parks. I would get their, their interest, their feedback. I'd do some site planning with the, with Jaws Cities, the landscape architects firms that do. These are smaller parks, you do a site plan, you make sure your access is acceptable, you make sure you have ADA covered. And I think you move forward from a budget standpoint, and you know what we're looking at financially for those parks. When you're getting into Oak Hollow, making improvements like Spray Park, you're talking about a major facility. And you're talking potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars. Is that the right facility for Oak Hollow Park? It may well be. I don't know. It may be something else. It may be an amphitheater that Mr. Miller's talked about to, to benefit a group of residents. It may be a dog park. It may be some other multipurpose field we've talked about in previous meetings. You've talked about lights. Again, Oak Hollow's, I mean, Oak Hollow and, and Indian Lake are our two regional parks. I could consider both crown jewels of our, of our park system. And before I would make a lot of improvements at, at Oak Hollow. Indian Lake, there's not a lot, much to do. As you guys know, it's pretty built out. But at Oak Hollow, I'd look at a, a site plan, a master plan for that. And that's how I would move forward with that. We've talked about developing bathrooms, getting sewage there. Those are all good things. But I think if we have a plan and a budget attached to that, we could move a lot more in an organized fashion, rather than a little bit haphazardly. Now, I know the drawback to that is it takes time. And no one wants to hear that. People want to get things done. But that's just somehow, sometimes the way it goes with us. It takes a little bit longer for us to move than it does a, a mind of business. So that's where I am. That's what I'm recommending. And I'm sure the board has some thoughts or suggestions on how to move forward with it.
So, what you're telling me to, it's for Markview Manor Park, if I want to move forward at all, is to get the residents together with you?
Yeah, honestly, that's my recommendation. I mean, that's what I would recommend. The board certainly would want to concur with that. But I would get a consultant to help us. As John had mentioned earlier, there's a lot of ways to reach out to people to get them involved. I'd want to get the residents of Markview, say, look, if they don't want to come, that's fine. Give them a chance. We have a meeting, we sent them a survey. I think that's what I would do. You know, years ago, I maybe wouldn't have done that. I've, I've changed some of my thoughts on citizen engagement. Citizens are probably more engaged than they were in the past. And I'd probably get their, I'd want to get their input, at least to see if we could accommodate some of their desires. If we put a park in, and the things we put in, none of them like, you probably made a bad choice.
I'm okay with that.
That's what I would do.
I'm okay with that, having a meeting and come up with a proposal. I guess some question is, when do you want me to have them set up to meet? Because that's not the, I can do that.
Well, it's really more of, if, if, this is, my memo's a response to the director. We have the June, because the June meeting said go across the park, come up with a plan, and figure out if we can build a playground there.
Right.
Well, feasibility is a broad term. I mean, I don't know if you mean feasibility, is it feasible to pay for it, to do it? Feasibility for something where we need a permit from an outside agency, maybe was it feasible from the standpoint of, can we get the proper permits? Probably for any improvements at Markview Manor, we won't need permits. The question will be, can we, do we have a billion dollars to spend? Or do we have five hundred thousand, a fifty thousand? We don't, we don't have any, any parameters to even talk about feasibility. So I would say, if the board likes these ideas of how to progress, this is how I would do it. But I'd also say, you got John coming back in a month. That's the time to really talk about where we go for the future of North Huntington Township. What's important to us? Is it maintaining existing facilities? Is it building new facilities?
I think, John, you're kind of a special base on it. And I, I kind of maybe think along the same line. So we got, you know, a five-year, you know, for vehicles and capital expenditure. So, you know, if we have an idea, you want to redo the ballfield in one of these locations, one of the parks, that should be in our five-year plan. You know, so, and I think that's kind of where you're going.
Well, it's, it's even, it's that, but it's also determining what you, you know, what you want to do. Because, as I said in the memo, you're not going to accommodate everybody's request here. You know, we have a lot, we have about thirty-one thousand residents, and you know as well as I do, there's people that have unique interests in recreation that you may not, you're not going to be able to provide that use. It's just not feasible. So if we have someone that wants a bad mid-court, maybe we do it, maybe we don't. Maybe we don't think that's the right idea. Someone may want a bungee jumping area. I don't know if we can provide that. I mean, my kids would love that. But that's probably not a reasonable improvement. So I think we could fill in the blanks with almost any recreational use that's available. And I think you need to pick the ones, for whatever reason you pick them. Whether it's those are the residents who wanted them most, or you're trying to, you're trying to serve a special population. There's a special group of people, for whatever reason, you want to build a kayak launch. And maybe only six or seven or eight people will use it, but it's important to you to have that. You should become the reason why you want to make those improvements, I think. That's, that's my recommendation. And with John's assistance, and the, you know, the strategic planning, that really sets your, sets your tone. You know, years ago, we didn't have a recreation director when I started the first time. Dan's our director. Now we've gone through a few. The residents of North Huntington wanted a director. They thought it was important to have a director. They wanted more programs. If you recall, for Dave, Rich, you guys have been on the board many years, we had not many programs here. Very few programs. So I think we've done a lot better in programming. Maybe we're still a lot good enough. That's the kind of thing you need to think about with, with, with John, is programming successful or not? If it isn't, what are we missing? And what is it going to take to provide more programming? So you really need to think, you know, think those things through, and then move in a direction. And even park improvements have been significant over the years. I've lived in North Huntington a long time. When I used to go to Oak Hollow Park, there was one swing set, there was the launch underneath it. That's the way it was. I'm sure a lot of you guys remember that stuff, because that's just the way it was here. That's just, I'm not saying it shouldn't be like that now. It's just the way it was. Doesn't mean we don't have further to go, but we need to figure out where we want to go. And it's, it's the right time to do that. So I keep, I keep this in mind with what John, with what John's doing, because it can really set us on a path, and then we'll, we'll know where to go. If you pull this, if you point us in a path, we'll try to get you there. So that's what I'm recommending with this.
And like you said, John, there's, I think a lot of it is reaching out to the people, the surveys, getting people Markview together, seeing if you get the, if what comes at the meeting, to let us know what they want there. If they want volleyball court, if they want a.
Maybe we can drive it, maybe we can. Sunset Valley, I think that's great for those neighborhood parks, just to get, you know, you draw a circle, or you say everyone in Markview out. I would figure that out. I'm not sure. It's, because I think the folks that live in Markview Manor Park, those are the folks that are going to go to Markview Manor Park. That's just common sense. It's a neighborhood park. It's, that's what it's designed for.
You don't have a decent comment that want to do it. You know, I mean, you're spending everybody in a conference meeting, not just the people of Markview through these parks.
Excuse me, with all due respect, a few years ago, I started here, there was an improvement made for Lions Park. There was a ballfield that was constructed down there. The ballfield isn't here anymore, and no one's asking about it. We spent probably
Years and years ago.
Thousands of dollars for a municipal ballfield there.
Years ago, there was a billion.
That's just my recommendation. Anyway, and I think just to summarize, John, you know, feasibility plus practicality will equal a vision. And then once we have a vision, certainly we would engage the community by asking for their input.
Center conditioners out to the public. They see them all during election time. And then after that, sometimes you don't even know who they are.
You know, the big thing to me is, I don't know if you know, anybody here knows, we have a drug problem. These can push it under the rug as much as you want, but these thirteens, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-old kids don't have nothing to do in our parks. Now they have, they're being back tossed, which I commend Dan for putting in. They at least have that, okay? But we need to think outside the box. Our deck hockey teams all go to Delmon. All we need to do is paint one of our basketball courts with dual stripes. That's all you need to do. I'm talking, I'm not done. I'm talking about items that are low-cost, low-maintenance or no maintenance, that we could do now. Now, if you want to do something like, you know, Markview Park may cost a hundred grand. We don't know. That's something we need to look into. A water park, that may cost a few bucks too. But, you know, we have children in this community with special needs. Do we have a park for them to go to? Do we have a swing set for them to go on? I mean, we need to be progressive. I'd be honest with you, having Dan run the parks and run all the events could be a little too much. He may need that.
That's a perfect topic for strategic. The vampire's an important part of that discussion we'll have.
Definitely is. He's not doing a good job with it. He is.
And you're right, we do have a drug problem. We have a drug problem down at, I gave you your chance. We have a drug problem down at Campbell's Court down there, where we have basketball courts, we have where they can do deck hockey, we have things for them to do down there. You know, we can't do everything for these parents too. So, you know, maybe we need to address that also.
That's a private park. There's somebody at that private park created a league. And we created a basketball league. We created roof deck hockey leagues, welcome for deck hockey courts all over the place.
I think that looking at the reason for recreation is important. We sometimes probably don't think about that. I would, I would suggest, without the scientific study, that recreation can assist with delinquency, but it's also, you're probably trying to attract a lot of other people into the parks for various other things. So I keep that in mind. I appreciate Commissioner Placenta's comments about that. But just keep that in mind, too, that there's probably a lot of park users that are coming for walking. I mean, the number one thing that we've had in North Huntington for years, anything we do, certainly, people want to walk, want to walk. They want a place to walk, they probably want a place to ride a bike. You know, you can, you bridge a lot of age gaps with that. I'm getting older. That's what my wife and I do, we walk. My, I'm a dad walk. Age seventy-five and seventy-seven, they're walkers. And they like places to walk. Thankfully, we're not worried about delinquency issue, but it's important to keep in mind, there's probably multitudes of groups you're trying, you're trying to reach out to, from a standpoint of hoping to provide.
All right. My kids would love, love a deck hockey. Yeah, there are a lot of kids down there who love deck hockey. But, you know, there's only so much we can provide. And like you said, we have to be strategic about it.
It only, see, that's what I'm saying. It only requires painting lines. An Oak Hollow Park, which already is fenced in, that nobody plays basketball at. That's what I'm saying. You have to pick what we can do now and what we can do later. But there's many things we could do now. You look at Round Hill Park, which is an Allegheny County park, and they have way more things than we do. They have outdoor adult exercise equipment right next to the swings. So when the people, when young people take their kids to the swings, they can exercise too. It stays hot all year round. They already know it's hot. They have yoga stations. They have yoga down at Irwin Park.
Dan, we think of that.
Yeah, and with all due respect, Round Hill is, is a county park funded by county dollars, which is a lot larger than our municipal dollars, our municipal budget here. And with respect to yoga, yes, we offer yoga at Indian Lake. We offered last fall, and we'll continue off at this fall here in the fall season. So even though we don't have a yoga park, we have a yoga program, and that's subbed out, because we don't have the vampire staff to hire instructors.
Hey, you don't need a yoga park. All you need is a yoga pad. That's all they do.
And that's, that's what we've used the new facility at Indian Lake for in the fall.
Well, I think it makes me break those gushes. I think where we're trying to head with this is really, you know, my memo was really more, this is what, what Commissioner Bertandy had placed on the table to a great extent, and the board agreed with, was bigger, these are bigger items, more than just repainting a court, something to that nature. So I was trying to respond to his bigger, his bigger picture items versus more things that we can do right now from a cost standpoint. So that's really what I wanted to address tonight. I, I get it, with John Tramp being here, it was a perfect time, because that's the kind of stuff that we need to, we need to look at and have a direction for. We've, we've come some distance in our parks, and, you know, there may be a future path to go that makes it more expansive. But that's, that's certainly something, I think. We've reached a place in the, in the, in the road where we want to make that decision. And that's what we're trying to do.
Dan, do we know what the YMCA, that building, that church, um, is down in Oak Hollow? Is there any vision for anything up there, or any church or anybody here?
You've probably done a little bit of history, that the Y M C A was a type of charter in one of the counties, and the national organization, and their charges for whatever it is. Anyways, a little embarrassed to say, I don't know why the church hasn't done anything with it. But I don't think we can do it much with it, because the church has the, has bought a lot of.
Can we talk to the church and see what possibly their vision is, if they have them?
I think the first building there is pretty well destroyed.
Oh, I don't think, not in current provision, but, but, I just, you know, I just like to sit, I don't, it's just.
Oh, I, I've passed it two and three times today, although we don't, all of a sudden, we're very stressed.
It's just the white trouble that's always.
You know, I know that was one particular site that they had talked about with the Regional Recreation Center as well, was trying to obtain that property. And I don't think they got very far ahead of us, for the community.
Any other comments or suggestions on the park development stuff? I think if we roll it into our strategic plan, we'll be moving in the right direction, if that's agreeable with the board. So, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next one, any further board comments?
Yeah, I do have one. We had a rescue meeting last night. The chain's people sent out an email to the board, about, I guess, maybe a future opportunity over there. He just wanted to know, I think Mike did give him a call back. He said he appreciated that. They talked for a while. He just wanted to know if any of the boards had, he saw my back book as well, about the proposal that, you know, could be on the top there.
I read everything in the back of the board's email, and he did something to his decision, just so he doesn't...
Yeah, yeah. We were talking to that board over there. He just wanted to know if there's anything to put from him.
Yeah, I'm fine with his logics work top.
Yeah, I feel confident in his, you know, decision.
I guess the original proposal they sent out, I wasn't really comfortable with the financial figures. I think John kind of gave him a rough idea of what, right now, what, you know, per right, kind of fee wise, what we contributed over that rescue, and give him a ballpark idea, so.
Your logics, logics are a regiment, so you heard it there.
Yeah, exactly. And I guess he was also making a point, as often I have, just like the fire department, so if there are calls outside their area, you know, fire department or, you know, EMS can't respond. So they are responding down there sometimes now as well.
I think those people have done a good job taking, you know, Shane and his, you know, great issues that protect them. They're positive, Russian, I think they, you know, going, you know, have never had a water rescue, you know, team. I think that's important. As long as, like, obviously, our people don't suffer in the township, you know, they're going outside the township.
You have a...
Yeah, I just had a question. I mean, this is the first we've talked about this in public. I didn't know, you even touched on it for the audience, what this is about, yeah. By the way, I didn't know that Shane was looking for input from us. I know, I told you, I followed the email chain, but I thought there was going to be a meeting maybe, or had you...
I asked him if he could come, and he wasn't able to come tonight. I can ask him if he would, you know...
Oh, yeah. It wasn't that I wasn't interested. It's just that I didn't know that's...
He was looking for a response.
Yeah, but, yeah, you could just touch on that for the public, what we're talking about.
Yeah, so it's, uh, Trapper Borough is, I guess, disbanding their EMS department, and they put it out for bid for other agencies if they would be interested in being their EMS service for Trapper Borough. And, you know, Rescue Aid was possibly entertaining the idea with Penn Township of having a joint venture covering Trapper.
Hey, Neil, hey.
Yeah, I was... I found that we condemned the House of Mercer Drive in Pinewood. Is that yours, Dwayne?
Yeah.
I just happened to be driving by checking out the sewage project, and I saw it corded up, read the notice and stuff. What's the situation with that? Because I was approached by the neighbors.
I would, I would recommend, Rich, I apologize. I know you like to discuss things in public. I've talked about that in private only because I think it's a legal matter, and there's attorneys involved. And I would, maybe I'd be more than happy, Andy would be more than happy to give you guys an update, but I would do it that way.
That's fine.
Just confidentially. Absolutely active meeting if you'd like to do it.
Yeah, I mean, condemnation was certainly public, so.
Right, but I'd like to talk about it, because we have more in front of us.
I understand.
Any other recommendations?
Yeah, I have one, one other issue. Five months ago, we had a detective come into this office and this meeting and talk about an alleged theft of millings. And that was February. We talked about it, discussed whatever. We hired a private investigator to do an investigation. I think we got the results of that in March, somewhere in there. Then we had a big discussion about what to do from there. We turned it over to county, we turned it over to the state, we turned it over to the, it was between the state lease and the AG's office, state AG's office. And we haven't heard anything back. And I know at one point, somebody had come into the meeting and asked a question, and I think that was in May, about what was going on. And I think John answered for everybody and pretty much said, "Well, I know if I was contacted, I wouldn't talk about it because it's an ongoing investigation." And I thought that was satisfactory, even though I knew a little bit more about the story at that time. I thought, you know, we have to give it due process. It's chance. So that was in May. Then we came to June. I'm not sure what all happened, if anything. In June, we're at July, we're five months into this. And there's been no response from anybody that I know of. I think, in fact, at that meeting where John made the comment about, "I wouldn't comment if I were contacted", he said, "Now, at some point, the board may direct me to follow up on this." Well, I think we're at that point. I think we need to direct them to follow up on it, so it's not hanging out there anymore. I mean, I think, on behalf of the victims, and the victims are the township taxpayers, if this happened, we need to address it. If it didn't, then we need to get over it and move on. But I think, right now, we're kind of stagnant. And I can tell you that on, in April, after we started over to Westmore County, I was contacted. And I met, April twenty-seventh, I believe it was, with an investigator, and I talked with him. And we, I told him at that point that I basically have no firsthand information on anything, but he wanted to talk to me since I've been on the board for some time, about policies and procedures. And during the discussion, I asked him what would happen. I said, "What, you know, how long is this going to take?" You know, it took our investigator, I don't know, a couple of weeks, maybe, I don't remember, a month, whatever. He said, "I'll have this done tomorrow." He said, "You don't understand, I'm the investigator. All I do is go out, talk to people, gather facts, I put together a report, and I report on the DA's, uh, test." He said, "That's, that's my involvement." So I think at this point, we need to find out, is it over? Is the investigation over? Is it still an active investigation? Is there going to be an outcome? Whereas, I mean, I think it's a fair, fair question at this point. So I would like to direct John to do that. Follow up on it, report back to us. I don't think we need to put it in a form of a motion and get our public input and add it to the agenda. I think there should just be a consensus to say, "You know what? Follow up on this and let us know, John."
Point of view, I think that it's a waste of time of this board to go any further with that.
I think that's a...
Somebody could be thrown away.
This is what's going on. You can't... This is an input of, of, this is part of the board's comments, Rich had a request for John to check with, I guess, the district.
I would say the DA, because that's the only one that I'm aware of that's doing it. I mean, I don't know, maybe there's more to it, maybe other people are. But I, I only know that firsthand because I was spoken to.
Yeah, I think if we reach out, Neil, we should reach out to the mall, just so we know where we stand with the mall. You know, reach out to the, turn to the DA's, or if they, they found nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever, maybe, just to know where we stand.
And I can send them, or after the board, I'll ask the solicitors, tell me can draft that so we don't say it's inappropriate. I can ask them just if we're looking for an update. If we get a response, great. If we don't, yeah.
Well, I think, I think if we don't, then I think you should update the board. Like, I don't know, can you do this by Friday, do you think?
Get the letter off?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think you should, I don't even know why it has to be a letter, but that's okay. It could be written.
I'd like to get something in writing just to have a record of it.
That's fine.
Give you an email, but I'd like to have some written correspondence.
And then send it to us so we know what was done, and who was, who was talked to, or who was sent to, so that we know who to follow up with later if we get no response.
That's fine. I can do, I talked to him on the letter. I talked to him last week, who was sent, I can do that. That's not a problem.
Because, I mean, we have to represent the victims. The victims are the people in the audience and the township taxpayers.
Any other further board comment?
Just one announcement tonight. Mark your calendar. Twenty-sixteen summer celebration at Oak Hollow Park is on Friday, August twenty-sixth. Saturday, August twenty-seventh, starting at four P M. Both days.
That's it.
All right, so, John?
Second.
Just second. All those affairs, yeah?
All right.
The boat, the ladder.
Do we, do we do a quick exact, if anybody wants to...
I'll actually do that.